Good evening and welcome to the February 2nd, 2016 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine, Friedman, Garpetian, Sinanian, here, Aaron Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Sinanian, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Please join me pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Charles Updike, pastor, emeritus, First Baptist Church of Glendale.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we come before you again tonight seeking ways to improve our city, serve those who live among us, continue to guide our mayor and council and others who serve as they address the needs of our city. May their work prosper and bring fulfillment to them as they devote themselves to good governance. We know we are blessed to live in the city that is progressive, full of many opportunities for learning, for working, playing, and helping. We ask for your protective arms to enfold and uphold us as our city moves forward. Be with our civil servants and first responders in times of danger. We pray for safety and security for all our citizens. Especially, we ask for your spirit of encouragement to surround and support all our children, their caretakers and teachers, and may all our efforts bring joy to their lives. As always, God, we pray for our servicemen and women who serve to protect our nation. We pray especially tonight for the family and friends of our native son, Army Sergeant Joseph F. Stifter, who lost his life in an accident while serving his country. May his family find comfort in knowing that we are all in their debt for his sacrifice and that we in Glendale will not forget his service. May our lives radiate kindness, compassion, and an open mind, a listening ear, and in all things, a generous spirit. We pray in your name, amen.
Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the February 2nd, 2016 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, January 29, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay. Mr. Sinanian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would like to request from you and my colleagues that we adjourn today in the name of, in the memory of Joseph Francis Stifter, who was just spoken of by Reverend Updike, and I'd like to read a short bio. I didn't know Joseph Stifter, but plenty of people did. He was the son of Glendale. He grew up in Glendale, and he's very fondly remembered by everyone that has spoken to me about him, so I'd like to read his bio. Joseph Francis Stifter was born in Los Angeles on February 1st, 1985, welcomed by his parents, Frederick and Regina Stifter, two-years-older brother John, and grandparents, Mr. and Mrs. William F. Stifter and Mr. and Mrs. Francis J. Tozar. In 1988, he welcomed his sister Ellen Christina to their family. Joseph and his family were active members of Holy Family Parish, Glendale, and later Saint Bede the Venerable in La Cunyada. Joseph was confirmed at Saint Bede and served in the youth ministry there. Joseph's early education was at Glen Oaks Elementary School and Wilson Middle School. He was noted in school for looking out for fellow students. At Wilson, he thrived in the school band and jazz band under the guidance and skill of Mr. Matthew Schick. At Wilson, Joseph learned skills of the night and of chivalry, and this was foundational. Joseph graduated from Saint Francis High School in La Cunyada in 2003. At Descapishin Franciscan School, he was influenced by many mentors of particular note, Mr. Manny Ulealia. Joe was awarded Eagle Scout in 2003, Troop 125, beginning with PAC 125 in the first grade. Pacmaster, Mr. Carl Nelson; Troop Leader, Mr. Jim McKenna. Scouting had a major impact on Jones, significantly influenced his choice of the military life. Joe enlisted in the United States Army in 2011, completed basic training in Fort Leonard Wood, Master of Training at Fort Sill, Missouri, and joined the 1st Battalion 7th Field Artillery Regiment after specialty training. He earned Sergeant on May 1st, 2015. On October 2015, Joseph said goodbye to daughter Olivia Anne just days before her second birthday and to his loving wife Melissa to go with his unit to Kuwait. He died in a vehicular accident on January 28th in Iraq. Joseph Stifter was proud to serve his country and to be part of the United States Army. He was extremely proud of his wife and child for their part in his military career. He was proud to be part of the big red one.
Thank you, and we will adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's move to the next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is presentation and appointments at 3:00 a.m. is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, February 9, 2016.
Ms. Beers.
Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, for the Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. We do have a joint meeting in the afternoon of the City Council and the Economic Development Corporation, one item, Director of Community Development. This is regarding the TEPFRE hearing for Maple Park Apartments. That evening, for the council meeting to commence at 6:00 p.m., under consent, we have Director of Public Works. This is a memorandum of agreement for the Coordinated Integrated Monitoring Program for the Upper L.A. River Watershed Management Area. Director of Public Works, Public Works Facilities Management Building Maintenance Contracts. Director of Public Works, Citywide Bike Way and Pedestrian Improvements, this is Phase Two, and we're awarding a contract. We do have one item under Adoption of Ordinances. This is authorizing and approving a lease agreement between the city and Glendale Arts for the lease of a tenant space located at 116 West California Avenue. Under Action, we have Director of Finance. That evening, we'll be discussing the mid-year report. Director of Public Works, Installation of New Traffic Signals, Battery Backup Systems. Director of Public Works, Report Regarding Announced Need Support for Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Automated Control Systems at the Glendale Police Department. Director of Human Resources, we have two items, Resolution of the City of Glendale Providing for Establishment of Classification Titles and Compensation for Employees of the City of Glendale, and a report regarding Authorization of Incentives for Employees Participating in the Lean Six Sigma Program. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is Consent Calendar, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Okay. Is there a motion for the Consent Calendar? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine, Friedman, Garpetian, Sinanian, Mayor Najarian.
Next item.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
I would like to start off and inform everyone that not next Tuesday, but in two Tuesdays from today, we will be having our Glendale City Council Meeting Work Boot Tuesday. And if you've been to any of them, we go to a particular area of interest or a particular department, and we give an in-depth discussion of that with some hands-on visuals and sometimes participation. So next February 16th, two Tuesdays from today, at 3:00 p.m., those interested in joining us, please meet at the City Hall Lobby. We will be given a tour of the Duque Majin Wilderness Park Barn, a tour of Verdugo Park, the Pacific Community Center and Health Clinic, and we will observe a Wong-Glendale Youth Soccer Game. So we hope everyone can join us, and we're going to be in buses, transit, V-line transit or what, so plenty of room, and we hope you all can join us. Thank you. Ms. Devine.
There appears to be something wrong with Councilmember Devine's microphone. We apologize. If you could speak up, perhaps, Vartan, Councilmember Garpetian's microphone could pick up your other comments while we look into it.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to mention that several of the ----------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------
Yes, on a lighter note, there are so many events going on this coming weekend, and we were invited to different functions that I would love to attend, but I will be out of town this weekend attending a concert, a pre-Super Bowl concert, and a portion of that concert is called Little Kids Rock. There's an organization that they go around the state and select children to perform with well-known bands, and my daughter was selected this year from Wilson Middle School, which I'm very proud of, so we're going to attend that concert, and we can't wait to see her perform, and I want to send a shout-out to my daughter, Naira. I know she's very humble, she doesn't like it, but so be it. Therefore, I won't be attending any of the events this weekend. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
So I've been thinking a lot lately about Shoal Canyon. You know, certainly, I think all of us have heard the concerns of the community, and particularly the people who live in Glen Oaks Canyon and in the areas of Los Angeles and Eagle Rock that are affected by the dump, and I think that whether or not we do an EIR and whether or not we, in a few years, think about expansion, I think what is very important for us to do, to have transparency and to assure the community that we hear them, is to not just tell them that we have a zero-waste policy and not just tell them that we're thinking about ways of not having to expand the dump down the line and not having to truck garbage to other places, but to really show the community and to work with them to develop a roadmap for how we're going to achieve that goal. To have milestones with dates that really set into place a plan with a course of action to educate our community about recycling and the importance of recycling, to make sure that we recycle in multifamily projects, multifamily housing, to recycle in commercial projects, to show how we're going to do outreach to the community, to show how we're going to increase the amount of material that we can recycle, to show a really integrated plan across the board to have a zero-waste policy that really gets us to a place, as soon as it's feasible, of really generating zero waste in this community. We have it as a goal, but I think where we've fallen short, and the community has picked up on that, is that we haven't shown them how we're going to get there. We may have that plan, but unless we work through it with the community, they're maybe not, won't have the trust that we really are moving towards that goal and that we hear their concerns about being to a point where we can not have to expand Shoal. So what I'd like is for us to begin that process of having, whether it's quarterly reports or whatever it is, to show what our plan is and how we're going to get there. There are groups that have expressed interest in sitting down at the table with us, who bring a certain level of expertise to help us. I would like to help facilitate that and to begin that process. I think it's very important for people in the community to know that we take their concerns very seriously and that we do have a plan that's not just expansion. That's certainly what I would like to see, and I think my colleagues. So I'd like to know if you're all okay with maybe having staff come back with, of ways that we can do this and ways that we can really present that to the community, but also make them our partners. Because if we're really all about increasing the amount of material we recycle, we can't do that on our own. That also requires our community to help us recycle. So I'd like to make this a community effort, and I don't know if I need a second for this, but I'd like to know if you all think that that's a good way to move forward.
I'll second that, sure.
Okay, so we can't discuss it now clearly, but you know, I think it's something for us to start talking to staff about how we're going to do this now. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sinanian?
Roll call, please.
Okay. And I have concluded my remarks as well. Let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor and Council, next on the agenda is a community event announcements. This is a portion reserved for three-minute announcements about events in our community.
Thank you. And I see a card from Mr. Corcoran, but I'm not sure this is a community event issue. This, I think, might be a general, yeah, I believe it's a general comment. I'm going to give that back. And if there are no other cards, then I will close this portion of the public comment or the community event announcements. And let's move to the next item.
Item 7, Adoption of Ordinances. 7A is amending a downtown-specific plan DSP relating to massage uses.
Mr. Ochoa?
This was introduced. If there's any additional questions, follow-up, we can answer those for council.
I'm ready to move the item, otherwise.
Okay.
Second.
I have no cards, and let's take roll.
Councilmembers Devine, Friedman, Garpetian, Sinanian, Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
He is amending Section 30.12.020, 30.14.020, 30.15.0.020, 30.60.0 through 0, and 30.70.140 of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to massage uses.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Devine, Friedman, Garpetian, Sinanian, Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
C is amending Sections 5.64.120, 5.64.160, and 5.64.190 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to massage establishments.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine, Friedman, Garpetian, Sinanian, Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
He is amending Sections 12.44.050 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 related to indigenous trees.
I'll move the item.
Second.
I have no cards. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine, Friedman, Garpetian, Sinanian, Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
He is authorizing the execution of the wireless communications facility lease agreement between the City of Glendale and Los Angeles SNSA Limited Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless at 3200 East Glen Oaks Boulevard, including supplemental report carried over from January 26, 2016 meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. This item and the item following it, if you look at your staff report and packets, contains the overview of literature concerning a number of reports as it pertains to health hazards or health risks and studies that examine any kind of nexus between cellular towers and the health, claimed health risks that would go along with the cellular arrays or the installation of such arrays. The item, looking back at the council's discussion from the last city council meeting where it was deadlock 2-2 and thus carried over to tonight, looks first at the ballfields in Glen Oaks Canyon, and then the second report, and I know we have to take these separately, but just for clarification, the second report, which regards the installation of a cellular array at Fremont Park, is the one that features a number of the studies that we have found from reputable health organizations around the world that effectively indicate that there is no clear evidence between alleged health impacts and cellular arrays. But that was the one, because it was at Fremont Park, that seemed to garner the most concern, although, as your discussion last week went back and forth, concerns rang over both, reigned over, over both of those two installations. So these are leases, because they are on public property. Certainly, if you have specific questions, Kokopinosian, our Parks Maintenance Administrator, he was the person that put these, assembled these reports, he can answer or at least direct you to the information that we have found, but at this point, we would defer to council as to what you would have us do with these proposed lease agreements. The first one on this action item being at Shoal Canyon at the ballfields, and then the second one, when you get there at Fremont Park.
Mr. Mayor, I might add that although you have to move in second and vote on each ordinance separately, it's up to the mayor's to recall if you want to read them, read them both into the record and have the discussion on both, since the discussion centers around the same general subject matter.
Will I be required to afford speakers two minutes to speak? If we take E and F together?
You won't be, you have to give a reasonable amount of time. You know, I suggest two minutes if you, if you put them together at a minimum, or you can do one minute each. It's your discretion.
Well, let's take them together, so if the clerk can read in F also.
Certainly. 7F is authorizing the execution of the wireless communications facility lease agreement between the City of Glendale and Los Angeles SNSA Limited Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless at 600 West Han Avenue, including supplemental report carried over from January 26, 2016 meeting.
Okay, so I'm going to call the speakers, and those that have submitted two cards, I'll give you your time consecutively. That means you'll have two minutes total, and you can address both Item E, 7E, and 7F, if you so choose. First speaker is Mike Mohill.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. It is unfortunate that council wants to count on cell towers and grant funding to help fund our park development, our park departments. Today, grants from county, state, and federal governments make up 90% of our park funding. Grant monies are great as a supplement, but should not be the primary source. Grant funding is welfare for failed cities. Park funding is being transferred--
Just a moment, just a moment. I had a, I was thinking, I was at the MTA meeting, sorry, where speakers are only given one minute, so let me, let's rethink the time that I'm giving. So I'm giving them consecutive amounts of time, so it would be six minutes, then, 3 plus 3?
Well, keep, Mr. Mayor, members of council, keep in mind with respect to the matters on the agenda, you do have the discretion in terms of giving a certain amount of minutes for each speaker, depending on your discretion as it relates to the amount of agenda items that we have, so you have discretion there to say, I'm going to limit it to one minute for each item. I wouldn't recommend anything below that. Our typical for an agenda item is two minutes, so--
I thought it was three--
No, we're at three.
Three, three.
Yeah, well, but again, it's, right, but again, it's your discretion in terms of, depending on the number of items on the agenda.
Okay, so let me, and you'll start from the beginning, Mr. Mohill.
Please do.
We'll reset your clock, but let's give you five minutes. So there's a one-minute discount that we're taking on your 3 plus 3.
How can we just do three minutes for each one? That's the way it normally is.
Well, because we're taking them together, I'm sure a lot of your arguments--
Unless, unless we have about 20 people in the room who want to talk, otherwise, what's wrong with three minutes for each time?
Well, we're going to go with five for those that have submitted two cards.
Okay.
And those who have submitted one card will get three minutes.
Okay.
So start over for Mr. Mohill.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity. It is unfortunate that council wants to count on cell towers and grant funding to help fund our park, park, park departments. Today, parks, today, grants from county, state, and federal governments make up 90% of our park funding. Grant monies are great as a supplement, but should not be the primary source. Grant funding is welfare for failed cities. Park funding is being transferred to the general fund to pay for the salary and pension benefits of our Calpers Union workforce. Unfortunately, we will need more cell towers wherever we place them in order to bring in more revenue to balance the budget and pay Calpers. A legacy, councilmembers Friedman and Najarian, have helped deplete park funding through the years, and now they both are seeking higher offices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next speaker is Tony Passarella. And so you have two cards submitted, and you'll get five minutes, Mr. Passarella.
Tony Passarella, 29-year resident of City of Glendale. Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, and staff and viewing public. All right, could you roll that, that one video, the longer one?
Fremont one?
Friedman, yeah.
Fremont?
No. Yeah.
Okay.
No, the other one. Could you stop my time?
Sure. The longer one. We're going to roll it right now. Right now?
Yes, that's it.
Laura Friedman, this is not a zero-sum game. We are not powerless in the face of these regulations. As a city, we do have options, and there are meaningful actions a city can take. We would like council to discuss and hopefully adopt the following actions. First, to adopt the unurgency ordinance and to adapt an moratorium. Second, that the city conducts a public study session with all relevant staff, including the city engineer-- including the city engineer and the city attorney, to educate the public about the towers and the issues surrounding them. The city should also look into sequoia implications if it offers any protection to potential historic landmarks and historic districts. The establishment of a notification process similar to that of the design review board applications, so that no residents will ever again be blindsided, and so that no one will ever find a crew digging in their front yards without notice again. That all new towers be approved by the planning commission, so that the public has the opportunity to review all the data and respond without having to come here each time. That the planning commission must make the following findings, based on proof provided by the utilities and thoroughly verified by city staff or an independent third party, that there is a current lack of coverage, that the placement is the least intrusive for the community, that the tower utilizes the least intrusive rather than the least expensive available technology, and that there is no other feasible location such as open space or technology available. Again, this would allow public review and challenge and a process. Next, that the DRB or HPC review the design and placement of all towers. These towers are part of the built environment, just like signs and buildings and other structures, so they should have the same level of review. There are options regarding placement, design, and landscaping. These boards, as well as the public, should be able to guide these decisions. That the planning department have authority over public works and engineering with regard to antennas and towers, because it's the planning department that has oversight of the built environment and the growth of the city. That all applications are reviewed to ensure that they are in complete compliance with all zoning codes. That the utilities reimburse homeowners for any reduction of property values through reappraisals. So if they're going to reduce somebody's property value, make them pay for it. They're making money on these towers. And finally, that the City of Glendale pass resolutions condemning the portions of the Federal Communications Act, which prohibits municipalities raising the issues of health concerns, to be sent to Sacramento and Washington, D.C., and a resolution condemning the portion of the California Public Utilities Code, Section 7901, which allows telecommunications companies to ignore local zoning codes and construct facilities along any public right-of-way to be sent to Sacramento. As a city, we are not powerless. We might not be able to stop every tower, but it's the city's right and your responsibility to regulate them.
Artie, I don't need that other, that other bit, thank you. Oh, you give me five more minutes, cool. No?
Fortunately, no, you're at four.
Oh, you give me four minutes. So now we're in the Vaughn's parking lot.
Is this the video you want played?
No, no, I don't need any more videos. How much time do I have left?
You have three minutes left before this-
Oh, I do?
Yeah.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Well, then play that other clip, then, the cool one. He gave me, Mr. Najarian, he gave me another minute. You only gave me five. He just gave me six.
I appreciate your honesty.
Switch from hot to snow fresh filter, cool.
Yeah, that's it.
Cool, snow fresh, cool, tail clean, so refreshing, so cool. As cool and as clean as a breath of fresh air.
I have a point, just hold on.
That's Snow Fresh Filter Cool.
It's pretty cool. It's from the 50s.
Your mouth feels clean, your throat refreshed. The finest leaf tobacco, mild, refreshing menthol, and the world's most thoroughly tested filter. That's Snow Fresh Filter Cool. Why don't you switch from hot to the snow fresh coolness of cool? As cool and as clean as a breath of fresh air. America's most refreshing cigarette. Snow Fresh Filter Cool.
Are we allowed to re-broadcast cigarettes?
That's what we just did.
Well, Mr. Passarella, that was cool.
We just did. That was cool, wasn't it? So my point is, you know, the tobacco industry painted this lovely picture, cool on your throat, and it's cool, and it's lovely, and breath of fresh air, right? And now they got warning label on the side of every cigarette package, right? So it's all about the money. It's all about the greed. The tobacco industry doesn't care that people are getting cancer from smoking cigarettes, right? Well, the next one on the horizon is going to be exponentially bigger than the tobacco, and it's EMFs, EMFs from cell towers, from all of it, from Wi-Fi, from cell phones, from baby monitors, and on and on and on. So I just want to put this to you. Mr. Garpadian, you don't want to be on the wrong side of history on this one, my friend. You've got your children, right? We don't know, there's an argument, a worldwide debate, right, on both sides. If there's even a hint about the chances of health effects, especially for children, my friend, you don't want to be on the wrong side of history, and neither do you, Mr. Devine. I know you gave those big contributions to the Children's Hospital, and you love children. I think you have children too, Mrs. Najarian, don't you? Sananian, you don't want to be on the wrong side of history, my friend. Years from now-
I have children, too.
I know you do. But years from now, if we find out that the cell tower you want to put up at Fremont Park affected kids in the playground area, that's on you. Mrs. Freeman, you know, you're running for office in November, right? I mean, people are watching this, right? I mean, how many votes are you going to get if you flip-flop? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Passarella. Next speaker is Patrick Turian. So I have two cards from you also, and you'll get five minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Patrick Turian. I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to present what I have tonight. Mayor Najarian, last week you stated that you needed some input from the fire department regarding the importance of the cell towers. Well, I went online, did some research, and I found it interesting, considering the International Association of Firefighters had declared a moratorium on new cell tower construction at the fire department facilities until credible science is developed. I enclosed a copy, obviously, for your reading here. So I enclosed a copy of that document for your review. In fact, in last March, our own L.A. firefighters convinced Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors to stop construction of cell towers at their fire stations based on health concerns. So firefighters themselves oppose the installation of a cell tower at their workplace. How can they support anyone placing something so dangerous next to people's homes and schools? That'd be very hypocritical. There was also another comment, Mayor Najarian, that I knew a little bit about. You stated that the risk of not being able to place an emergency phone call, a 911 call, when a resident needs help far outweighs the claims of health risks of the radiation from the towers. I also have documentation. I went to the FCC. It's just that the FCC has a 911 rules. Requires wireless service providers to transmit all 911 calls to their PSAP, regardless of whether the caller subscribes to the provider's service or not. So assuming I have no Verizon reception, and don't even subscribe to any service at all, as long as I have a charged cellphone, I can make that 911 phone call. So I am urging you to deny the approval of the cell tower at Fremont Park. That tower will ruin our neighborhood. Who would want to live next to a cell tower? Imagine what it's like for people who purchase their dream home, only later to have an unwanted cell tower installed just outside of their home. So a number of organizations and studies have documented the detrimental effects of cell towers on property values. According to a 2005 study published in the Appraisal Journal, the results of the sales analyst's analysis show prices of properties were reduced by as much as 21% after a wireless transmitter was built in the neighborhood. And I also enclosed a copy here for everyone to read. So according to the National Institute of Science Law and Public Policy Survey of 2014, titled Neighborhood Cell Towers and Antennas: Do They Impact a Property's Desirability? The overwhelming majority of respondents, 94%, reported that cell towers and antennas in a neighborhood or on a building would impact their interest in a property and the price that they'd be willing to pay for it. So also, while the wireless industry contends that there are no adverse health effects related to cell towers, even a perceived health risk is enough to affect a neighborhood near cell tower. Whether perceived or real health risks, a cell tower installation will adversely impact the neighboring properties and schools because it will create worry and anxiety and a need for moving out of the neighborhood. That will lead to the deterioration of our neighborhood. So we do not want to lose the value of our homes. It is not fair for our neighborhood. Who's going to reimburse us? They will be making profits at the expense of our neighborhood. Once again, I urge you on behalf of the residents surrounding the Fremont Park to deny the application of the new cell tower. So once again, thank you so much for the time.
You? Nona Stepanian. Five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, I'd like to talk about the adequate coverage in Fremont Park. Our own Glendale Wireless Telecommunication Ordinance extensively incorporates a city's right to require that a new tower be proven necessary. This goes in accordance with the U.S. Ninth District Court of Appeals finding that the cell tower applicant has a burden of proof that a significant gap in coverage actually exists in the proposed location. The court noted that a mere gap in coverage is not sufficient, and it must be a truly significant gap in coverage. I have a short video that was taken yesterday at Fremont Park to show that we have no issues with Verizon coverage there. Would you please play that one?
Sure. You'll have to tell me which one exactly.
It's-
This one?
Yes.
In Fremont Park, the proposed cell tower is going to go over there. Here are the tennis courts, basketball court. Got a call coming in here. We're going to see what the reception's like. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, I hear you loud and clear, in spite of all this wind.
Sound great.
Thank you. Bye.
You, bye.
Okay, now we're going to do an outgoing phone call from the children's play area. If you have Verizon, we're going to see if you can, for example, if your child gets hurt here, if you can make an outgoing call. So let's do that. Hold on, speaker?
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me well?
I can hear you very well. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
One unit was a very windy day, but as you can see, there was no issues with coverage at all. Glendale Ordinance also requires that the applicant provides alternative sites information that includes the potential for co-location and the availability and feasibility of potential alternative sites. Did you have a chance to examine that report from the cell company? There are already a few cell towers in the commercial part of San Fernando Road in Glendale. Why can't they just co-locate the antenna to an existing tower? As you can see from the video, we have no problems with coverage at all. There should be no place for a cell tower in any residential park, including Fremont Park. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Are there any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, or a comment. Mr. Friedman?
Well, I'll do both. I did watch the hearing last week, just so you know. And I thank you for bringing that clip in. That was a long time ago. It was kind of like a trip down memory lane. And just to be clear, I can't take credit for all of that. That was me delivering a recommendation from a group of residents, which is why I use the word "we." So I want to be sure that they have their credit. It wasn't just me. There were a whole lot of people that were involved in that cell tower ordinance creation. And the ordinance was created. Basically, we asked for a level of review, because previous to the ordinance, there was no level of review. What was happening was the cell tower companies were coming in, and the towers would spring up, and the public wouldn't know. So now we do have a process. And Mr. City Manager, this particular cell tower site, did they have any level? They had a level of review at the city, I'm assuming? What board did they go in front of or commission?
They went to the planning commission for a public hearing.
Okay, so that's what the ordinance was intended to do. That was one of the things, as you heard in the video. The other thing was to try to keep the installations as far away from residences as we could, you know, which is difficult when you get, of course, into dense urban areas where you're kind of in the middle of a neighborhood. It's hard to get to where you're not anywhere near any house. And these towers aren't such that you can just put one up on the top of a mountain somewhere, and then you're done. They have to kind of relay station, so they have to be around the city. And again, in the past, what would happen with the cell towers was they would put them in the right-of-way, because legally, they're allowed to put them in the right-of-way. And they would go right in front of someone's door. And so now, the reason that you see this tower not going in a place like that, but going instead in kind of the back of a public park, but, you know, off, away from where the people are, is because it's a better alternative than putting it right on a city block where you're literally 10 feet away from someone's house. I mean, there are houses that are nearby, but they're across the wash, and it's pretty wide there at that point. And I went to the site today, and I walked around the site. So I did look at it, because I really wanted to see what it looked like. I wanted to be sure it wasn't right next to a playground, because I know that would concern people, and it's not. It's pretty far. It's got to be like 100 yards away from the playground, at least. I don't know about 100 yards, but it's far. The playground is across the tennis courts, you know, and, you know, it's not like you're in the shadow of the cell tower. But, you know, I hear people. People are worried about the health effects. And, you know, it's hard, because it's hard to prove something safe, right? I mean, you really have to look at the science of what these are and where the radiation is detected, and how far away it transmits. And from what I've seen, it disperses pretty quickly, much more so than a cellphone that's sitting in your pocket, which is a much more direct source of radiation than a cell tower that's 50, 100 feet away from you. So, you know, the fact is, if we deny this tower, they have the right to then put it somewhere in the public right-of-way. And we have some things that ordinance allows us to do. It allows us to say, well, shift it 20 feet away, shift it 50 feet away, but we can't say to them, no tower at all. And if you listen to the clip where we're talking about the ordinance, where I talked about the ordinance, it acknowledges that. It said that what we want is a public review about where they're going to go. We want to make sure that they're necessary. Did they look at the, did they make the findings of necessity? Can someone, maybe Rubik or whoever was dealing with it, kind of, I don't know, just talk about-
Necessity of what?
Of having a gap in coverage, that part of it.
Well, they have to do a gap analysis. Our ordinance, that has been discussed, you know, quite a bit here, does not get into those technical terms. It simply requires that they do have a gap analysis done, that it meets FCC standard. And Verizon has met that threshold. And you're correct, that if we say no, which you would be saying no to the lease, not to the cellular array, in all likelihood, if there is that gap in service that they feel that they want to restore, they'll find someplace else to put it, whether in the right-of-way, with an encroachment permit, or on another private property. It's, I think you've stated, I thought the clip Mr. Passarella played actually benefits the position that was argued in support of the leases, to the extent that when, as you indicate, cellular companies were simply pulling up and installing in people's right-of-ways, right in front of their front door, that definitely has an impact on people's property values. Co-locating in an underutilized part of the, of public space and public area is the lesser of many evils.
Okay, there was a late card that came in. I will not accept any other cards. Glenn Webb, three minutes.
Yes, I was here last week when I heard the gentleman speak about the health and safety effects of the cellphone towers on children. And I wanted to kind of get up and shout at the moment, but I restrained myself and came back today. First of all, the Communications Act of 1934 and 1996 grant exclusive purview to the federal government and the Federal Communications Commission for regulation of electromagnetic radiations with respect to communications, both radio and wire communications. So the first point I want to make is that the city council has no jurisdiction whatsoever over the control of electromagnetic radiations. You certainly have control over aesthetics, permits, as far as making sure the tower doesn't fall down upon children, and so forth. So we should be looking at the proper issues. And the gentleman that spoke against, and the lady that spoke against the tower, both last week and, I suppose, tonight, should be taking up their concerns about health and safety to the proper authorities, which is the Federal Communications Commission and the federal courts, which have jurisdiction over those matters. Second, the recordings which the gentleman did of the cellphone emissions are in violation of Section 2511 of the Federal Code, which prohibits intercept, recording, and dissemination of private radio and wire communications. Although the recordings that he put up were gobbledygook because he had improper receiver, they could just as easily be decoded into clear voice, which could disclose confidential communications of private cellphone users in violation of Article 2511 of the Federal Code. I might also caution the city that you might want to remove those audio recordings from the website, from the city's website, because you are now disseminating those same recordings, which can easily be decoded into clear voice, and would make the city council doing the same thing of disseminating private radio communications. And my final point is, I want to put this matter of electromagnetic radiation into some perspective. The cellphone in the pocket of the gentleman who made the comments, and the lady who made the comments, of someone sitting next to them, 1 meter away, radiates electromagnetic energy at 1 million times the intensity of the cellphone tower to a child or an adult 1,000 meters away from the cellphone tower. It's proportional to the square of the distance. 1 meter, in other words, the cellphone in your pocket, 1 meter away, radiates electromagnetic energy into the body of the person sitting next to them at 1 million times the intensity of that cellphone tower at 1,000 meters' distance. Also, there are something on the order of a half a billion or a billion children in this world that are using their cellphones adjacent to their body, within 10 centimeters of their body, which produces field strengths that are 10 million times the intensity of a cellphone tower at 1,000 meters.
Your time is...
Okay, on a daily basis, 12 hours a day, there are no documented health effects from the cellphone use. If there were, everyone would be throwing their cellphones in the trash and getting rid of them. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other cards. Let's continue with comments or questions.
Some comments. I was one of the people who voted against the tower last week, and the reason I did that was because I wanted to read up on the safety or the unsafe nature of these cell towers and requested staff provide us with that information. Staff has done so, thank you. I've read it. And the gentleman that just spoke, I'm so sorry, I don't remember, recall your name, but...
Mr. Webb.
Mr. Webb, what you said was confirmed by the information provided by staff, including information from the American Cancer Society, indicating that there is no proof of any harmful effects from cell towers. Now, I don't know if 1950s American Cancer Society existed, or if it existed, if it endorsed cigarette smoking. I would, it'd be very sad if that was the case. I mean, it would be just really tragic. But, and I'm referring to the video that was played by Mr. Passarella. But I don't see the evidence, I just don't see evidence indicating that these cell towers are dangerous. That's based on the information that I've read over the last week.
Mr. Garpetian?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'm not an expert in this field, and I ask for the information to come back to us. So it came from EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, from the World Health Organization, American Cancer Society, and so on and so forth. I want to read a couple of these paragraphs that was in here, and it's very interesting, and it also seconds what the gentleman, Mr. Webb, was saying. The amount of RF energy at ground levels near typical cell tower base stations is thousand times less than the limits for safe exposure set by the U.S. Federal Communications... No, that's not what I wanted to read. Exposures from living near cell towers is typically many times lower than exposures from using a cellphone. That was, that's shocking to me. I mean, I never thought that would happen, or that a cell tower would have a lot more radiation than the cellphone itself. But nonetheless, I, also on the FCC portion that says FCC finds no health risks associated with cell towers and radio frequency, it says although the FCC permits an effective radiation power for up to 500 watts per channel, the majority of cellular or PCS cell sites in urban and suburban areas operate at an ERP of 100 watts per channel. That's what that's saying, it's almost 1, 20% of the watts allowed. And if we move forward and say, there is a portion of the report that says, "Can I limit my exposure?" It says cellphone towers are not known to cause any health effects, but if you are concerned about possible exposure from a cellphone tower near your home or office, you can ask a governmental agency or private firm to measure the RF field strength near the tower. What I'm saying is, I think we are preempted, and we have to vote for this item, but I think we need to have one of these towers tested and see if the level is where this report is, are saying it is or not. I mean, there's Verizon, there's AT&amp;T, there's so many other towers. Pick and choose. We have, I don't know, over 100 of them in our city. Let's choose one of them and measure, sorry? I thought someone was saying something. Measure the ERP and see if it's within that 100 or 500 watts or not. And then we will have an argument. I mean, I know we can't, the only thing we can regulate is their location, but I think we owe it to the residents to measure one of them, one cell tower, and see what the radiation is, and go from there. If it's truly your cellphone has more risk to your health than the cell tower, let's have one, 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 I think Verizon can do it.
Mr. Devine, do you have any comments?
Well, you know, I don't want to repeat what everyone else has said. I read the reports as well, and thank you to our staff for preparing these. And it seems to be consistent that they really don't have any effect. I felt, I thought, and I was going to do what Mr. Garpetian did, a council member, and redo some of these, you know, no reason to believe that such towers could constitute a potential health hazard. And the one about the cellphones, I think, is particularly noted, the ARC also noted that exposure to the brain from RF fields from cellphone base stations are 1/100th exposure to the brain from mobile devices such as cellphones. So I thank Glenn for coming in and speaking on this, and I was for the cell tower from the beginning, and both of them, and I will approve the item.
Mr. Garpetian?
Can we ask the gentleman from Verizon one quick question?
Yes, if he's here, if he's ready to speak.
Yes, he's here.
Come forward and give us your name and field the question for Mr. Garpetian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. William Desmond, representing Verizon Wireless.
How do you feel about, can you tell me where are the locations of the cell towers that you have right now in the city? One or two of them?
Well, the nearest ones, I could actually show you if you indulge the presentation. We do have, we do have that. Or I could just simply refer you to the two nearest sites, or three nearest sites to the facility. We have a site to the west of Fremont Park that's called Doran. It is just east of the intersection of the 5 and the 134. Probably one of the towers that was referenced as why we couldn't locate over there, that's already an existing site for us, so we wouldn't put another site where we already have a site. The next closest site to the east is located along the 134 freeway.
No, no, in the city, in the city, not along the freeway.
It's within the city of Glendale.
No, I understand that, but like, in more residential area, do you have anything in more residential area? I know along the freeway, most of the towers are there, but...
We do have a cell site up off of Glen Oaks Boulevard near Davis Avenue. It's in the commercial zone, but it abuts...
Do you like your presentation to be shown?
You know, actually, we can just...
No, 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 we don't need the presentation.
Right. And also, to the northeast of Fremont Park, we have our Kenneth site, which is along Bran Boulevard. It is, again, in a commercial building, but it is surrounded by residential to the north and east. So those are some examples of sites that are just in the, in close proximity to the Fremont Park site in question. And there are other sites that are in the process of being designed in other areas of the city, and many other sites throughout the city, more than I have information in front of me to be able to, you know, refer you to.
Okay, the amount of ERP that is allowed is 500. I'm not an expert, I'm just reading based on what's in here. And it indicates that most of them operate at an ERP of 100 watts. Is there a way to measure one of your sites and find out what it is? Regardless of this project's going, moving forward, I mean, we have the votes, it's going to move forward, but can we measure one of those sites near the cell towers and see, say, yes, it's within the limit, and less than, 80% less than the allowed limit? Can we do one of, can we measure one of these sites?
Yes, in fact, most jurisdictions, as part of the planning approval process, actually require that within six months of the cell site going on air, that the EMF study be conducted and submitted to the city to validate that it is operating in conformity with the FCC regulations. However, as just a practical matter, Verizon has to self-regulate on all of its sites, whether required by the jurisdiction or not, because we cannot be found to be in violation of our FCC license. There's too much at stake to be found to be operating in excess of the allowable, or allowable levels of exposure. So to answer your question, the short answer is yes, an independent study could be performed by a firm, one example, Hammont Nedison, is a nationally recognized radio engineering testing company. They perform tests for all the wireless companies nationwide. They could conduct such a test within six months of the site going on air and provide a report to the city.
No, but for your existing ones, do you have anything updated? Like, within the last six months, do you have any report of any of your current sites?
I would have to check with the Verizon RF team specifically to see what might be available that might be within the last six months. If it was not conditioned by the city of Glendale, it was probably a self-certification from Verizon Wireless, but I could look into that.
But if there's a self-certification, you will have a report in order to self-certify it?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to request to, for Verizon to provide that report to us, just to be on the safe side. I mean, I know that this is here, it's not going to go away, we all use our cellphones. I just, in my, in my heart, I don't want to add to any problems. And if there is a problem, we'll find out in 50 years, maybe. Maybe it doesn't come up in the next five or 10 years. But if there is, there's such a report, I would like to, you know, review a copy of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As for myself, I have invited Fire Chief Greg Fish and Assistant Police Chief Carl Povolitis to talk about the dangers of not being able to respond to an emergency, whether it's a medical or criminal emergency. But, gentlemen, I'm going to excuse you because I think we're, I think I can count votes, and unless you feel a great, you've got some paperwork there, I see, but unless you'd like to address council, I don't think we need to continue down the discussion. I think we're seeing things as one. So I'm sorry for bringing you here, but I do appreciate your responsiveness to coming forward.
I feel terrible that Chief Povolitis has a full report there for us. Could he, could we have him do a short?
Oh, let's not, let's not, let's not do that. And I'll owe you, I'll owe you one, gentlemen. I'll give you priority on the next issue that you're here for. If there's no other discussion, let's take the roll call.
There hasn't been a motion.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Move 7E. Can we do both at the same, or? Okay, let's start with 7E. Motion by Ms. Friedman, second by Ms. Devine.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Abstain.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Aaron Najarion?
Yes. Maybe we'll have the chiefs talk about the dangers to convince Mr. Garpetian anyhow. 7F, is there a motion?
There is. We can take roll. Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Abstain.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Aaron Najarion?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Let's move to the action items, as if that wasn't enough action.
Action item 8A, Police Chief regarding alarm administration outsourcing. 8A1 is a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with PMAM for the administration of the Glendale Police Department's alarm program.
Well, you were here anyway. Well, I take back my apology. 8A, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir, and certainly we can go to our Assistant Chief Carl Povolitis for the detail, but as you may know, as you certainly will recall, we bill for our response costs for false alarms that occur at the same address in excess of three times in any given fiscal year. We currently administer the cost recovery in-house, and that generally is just not as efficient as we otherwise could be. We are seeking to contract out that cost recovery service, and so an RFP was conducted with two firms responding. One of those firms was deemed to be most responsive, though they both were, they were negotiated with, and we are seeking your approval to contract with them, as requested by the department. With that, that's a lot of what the report is, but Carl may want to tell you a little bit about the firm PAN, or, I'm sorry, PMAM, is that what it's called, Carl? Yeah. And be able just to give you an update about the process and what was, the diligence that was provided in terms of making the recommendation to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Carl Povolitis, Deputy Police Chief. As I said, Mr. Ochoa covered most of it. We did do an RFP process on this. Currently, we have some 8,700-plus alarm permits out in the city, and one person really handles all those permitting processes and the billing for the false alarms. And we responded to about 2,900 or so false alarms during the last year. So that's a lot of work that's handled by one person. In looking for ways to do things a little bit more efficiently and to reduce the number of false alarms, we've been looking at outsourcing. In response to the RFP, we had two companies respond to that, and we've done both interviews with them, and we've also done reference checks on them. And as I said, what we think is the best value, both in terms of lowest cost structure and in terms of their customer service, is PMAM, and we're recommending that we go with them. What most cities have found is that going to the service, we benefit from economies of scale with people that, with people that do this for multiple cities. So from a customer service standpoint, our customers, our residents, will find it easier to renew their permits because it will all go online, and so they can do that 24/7, and representatives will be available during business hours to deal with that. And then from a business standpoint, this company would also do the follow-up on the false alarms, and the combination of that along with an education component ends up reducing the calls for, calls for service, which frees up officers for other time. On the financial standpoint, the company's ability to go through the due diligence and manage that system, generally, cities find that their revenue increases from 15% to 30%. And so our best estimate is really this has, you know, a net increase to us by being able to go with this firm of about $29,000 a year when we, if we move out of the business.
I don't have any cards. Are there any questions or a motion?
I just want to know if we have a fine for false alarms. Do we have a fine?
Yes, we do. So, and the number's escaping me for the moment, but yes, after your third one, you start getting fines, and they are progressive.
Three?
It's $250.
Then they go up. So we did...
Thank you.
Three in a year, three in a year.
Three in a year, but doesn't $250 kick in after the second time?
I believe it's the third, but...
It's the third. I've paid that.
So your third one, it's after your second one. Yes, yeah, no, we do have a fine.
Chief, I have a couple of quick questions. I want to understand this accounting that we have here. Wearing estimated annual revenues 400, 500, and 600,000, this is, it varies between 400 to 600,000, is that what it is?
We estimate that currently, we do, with that, we would, we bring in about 500,000 under our current system. So it's a little bit more complex and not laid out, per se, in the staff report in great detail. But what you would see is most cities experience that 15% to 30% increase in overall revenue. At the same time, you have a reduction in the number of false alarms. We actually let these companies look at our data and give us our best estimate, and we've gone with a conservative. So we think in the net, we're 22,500 to the good on just the alarms, and we no longer have to maintain our own software.
And the companies are going to charge us based on our gross revenue or net revenue?
That's the gross revenue. We think, we should come out net revenue to the good.
Okay, so they're charging about 19%?
On the amounts over, I believe that's over $250,000.
Okay.
So it's a sliding scale, but their cost structure ends up being lower.
So if it's $500,000, 20% is about $100,000. And we have one, one full-time employee that it's, and we are anticipating by hiring this company, our net will go from 400,000 to 430,000.
Right.
After paying them $100,000.
Correct. We're expecting that our net revenue will actually increase slightly, so as I said, no cost to the city.
And then it will free up one of our officers...
And then, it will free up one of our officers.
That's correct, and they have other, I mean, this is sort of an ancillary duty, they do all of this, but they also have other responsibilities in the department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Eight A one, roll call, please.
Counsel members, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarion?
Let's go to eight B, please.
Eight B is Police Chief and Chief Information Officer regarding recommendation to authorize the purchasing manager to issue a purchase order with Coban Technologies, Inc., to purchase an annual maintenance and support agreement for maintenance of police equipment. B one is motion authorizing the purchasing manager to issue an annual purchase order with Coban Technologies, Inc., for, with four additional optional annual one-year terms.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir, several years ago, we purchased from Coban a number of units for the car cameras that we have in our police cruisers. At this point, we are asking you to approve this maintenance and operations purchase order that would come along with several one-year options to extend. If you have any specific questions, again, Assistant Chief Povolitis can answer those for you.
Okay, and this is completely proprietary?
Absolutely, you have the letter in front of you.
And no one else can maintain and repair these items?
Do we know how much did we pay for the equipment in twenty-twelve? What was the cost of this equipment?
I'm sorry, I don't recall the exact number, I was here when we did the purchases, and it was a combination where we traded in our existing equipment to get this equipment, so we got updated equipment, and that was our, that was the best deal out there at the time. I wanna say one point two million or thereabouts.
One point two?
I believe so.
So, basically, the cost of maintenance is about seven to eight percent a year for another four years or so?
Yeah, the warranties have finally expired, but on the other side, this is part of our training and risk management, it's our in-car video and all of our in-car computer MDT systems.
Okay. Thank you.
Which have saved us some embarrassment with a particularly famous mother and son who accused our officers of racially profiling, but.
No, it is part of our risk management and training system, it allows us to review incidents as they occur for training purposes, risk management, or when we do get somebody who gals in and complains, it allows us to go back and actually review what happened on the incident. So, we've, we've found it to be a very valuable tool for our local law enforcement.
I'm sure it's also a restraining tool for officers lest they be tempted to be out of line, I mean, they're human beings, it happens. Knowing that the cameras there is productive for that, for that purpose also.
I mean, everybody's a human being, and I would say that we have a very, very professional police department, we hire, we hire the cream of the cream, and the, and the best people, the men and women that work here are top-flight, and as I said, we've had, you know, they are on camera, and as I said, if it's not ours, everybody else knows about that.
Sure, I did not expect you to say anything disparaging about our police officers.
Thank you, so, would someone like to move eight B one?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel members, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarion?
Yes, next item, please.
So, Mayor and Council at eight C is the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding repairs to unit numbers eight A and eight B C at the Grayson Power Plant, GPP. B, C one is a motion authorizing the purchasing manager to issue a purchase order with FinTube LLC for the purchase of new economizers for the unit numbers eight A and eight B C, heat recovery steam generators at the Grayson Power Plant, GPP, for an amount not to exceed eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. At two is a motion authorizing the purchasing manager to issue a purchase order with Voight Power International, Inc., for the purchase of the new feeder and riser evaporator tubes for the unit numbers eight A and eight B C, heat recovery steam generators at the Grayson Power Plant, GPP, for an amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Three is a motion authorizing the purchasing manager to issue a purchase order with Camphal Power Systems for the purchase of three new air intake filters assemblies for unit numbers eight A and eight B C, gas turbines at the Grayson Power Plant, GPP, for an amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Four is a motion authorizing a change order to contract number C one zero-five-five-seven-seven with A R B, Inc., to increase the contract amount by one million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, to cover repairs to unit numbers eight A and eight B C, and to remove the two hundred thousand annual cap on the contract.
Thank you.
And five is resolution appropriating transfer of funds from project four-three-one-one-one dash five-five-three dash nine-two-one dash three-zero-zero-one-seven, and four-three-one-one-one dash five-five-three dash nine-two-one dash three-zero-zero-one-eight, to project four-three-one-one-one dash five-five-three dash nine-two-one dash three-zero-zero-one-nine.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa?
You will recall, as we commenced the discussion about the repowering of Grayson Power Plant, that as we moved through that decision-making process, there would come certain milestones where we would be putting costs into the old plant, even if we were going to move forward with the repowering of a new, modern plant. What you have here, and item C, is a reflection of those costs. We still have to keep the lights on, still have to keep the, the reserve going of power that we have to keep through the twenty-four-seven cycle, and so, we have before you the movement of some funds from one project to another, as Mr. Zern will explain to you in a second, trying to make sure that those pieces of our infrastructure, that, as we triage them, that need to be replaced, that are critical to providing reliable and safe service to our customers, we can continue to do that in the most economical way possible. So, with that, we'll have Steve walk you through this project and how it all fits together with the overall repowering.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as Mr. Ochoa has indicated, this is one of the repairs that we find necessary to undertake, even in light of the fact that we are seriously down the road examining the, the potential for us to repower the plant. As you may recall, when we started down that process, I had indicated there were a number of projects that we needed to do at the power plant, and I think, as I've also stated before, with, with no exaggeration, there is no really cheap repair when it comes to the power plant. I will tell you that before you tonight, not to, to minimize it in any way, this is a patch, this is, this is a patch. I know it is two-point-nine million dollars, but this is something that gets us through a very short period of time. Everything that we do, we looked at it in the matter of where this puts us in the three-to-four-year area out on, on our path. In this particular case, cost-benefit analysis and return on investment, and that was all factored in by looking at having to replace outside, with outside power and transmission, those are the things that are, if available, are very costly, and as you well know, are out of our control. The only control we have is, is the power that we can produce at our own facility. This really struck me as, all more, all the more important after this last summer. We had a very tenuous summer, as, as you may recall, we had a number of units down, we warmed up tremendously at the end of the year, we had transmission issues outside of our control, it all pushed a lot of emphasis on our ability to produce local power, and we tested, well, I'll tell you, the staff did a great job, but we tested the limits this past summer. I don't wanna see us in that position again, and that's one of the reasons we're bringing this forward. Now, eight, units eight A, B, C, that you see before you are very integral units, because they also use units one and two to produce electricity, they all work in unison. And, as an example, with these units repaired, and unit four, which you've previously approved for repair, and unit nine, you're aware of our unit nine, the most, the newest unit we have that we, that even in a, in a proposed repower, we would keep, gives us an estimated hundred-and-ninety megawatts of potential power for us to produce at Grayson without this repair, and units one and two going down, we'd probably have less than seventy megawatts available, which means we would be scrambling on a daily basis on the open market, if, if we could even get it, to try to maintain our spinning reserve and our emergency power. Let me give you a couple of examples of what, what further scared us this, this past summer. As you know, the heat went further into the fall than, than is typical, October was a very hot year. When we were anticipating some triple-digit days in October and wanted to shore up our power supply, we couldn't find any power. Those who could get it to us without the transmission were not willing to sell it to us because they were taking care of their customers first. At the same time, one of the major transmission lines, the DC line, was put down for, for maintenance. Granted, that's the time you wanna do maintenance, in the, in the late fall through the early spring, however, with that heat wave going a little bit further, that put us into predicament. And probably the most telling and most critical one was, was a transmission or a transformer that exploded on a transmission line in which we own an interest. And we originally told that line, it was in October when it, when it went down, we were told it would be back up by June, which puts us in a very good position for the summer. We're now being told by the city of Los Angeles, it will not be till October. So, effectively, that line's been de-rated, and we've lost that transmission ability. It just focuses more on, on our need to, to be able to have the local power as part of a diversified portfolio, but certainly the need, especially when we enter the warm season, in this particular case. So, what we've done here is to try to mitigate this, as I said, is, it is a minimum, minimal repair. We're asking to, to use original equipment manufacturers' equipment on this so that we can expedite the repair and also keep our costs down. We are, we have a maintenance contractor, under contract, that will perform the duties, and we can have this, this unit up and running by the time that we, we reach the summer season. Hopefully, this is sometime in May, June at the latest, that we would have this operational. It's become a critical component for us to continue. And again, this, this really is a two-to-three-year proposition, that's, that's what this gets us, and then, at the time that we, we, by then, we'll, I imagine, have made the decision one way or the other, whether we're gonna go forward with the repowering, and that just brings in a whole second discussion on, on where we're gonna go from there. But this is, this is very immediate, this is to get us through the next couple of summers, and, and to be able to control our own destiny, which is becoming more and more critical for us, as we're seeing others, not by their own hand, just two things, they're doing things that I can't, can't say I wouldn't do, taking care of their customers first, or having mechanical problems of their own that are outside of their control, but in any, in any instance, it comes back to affect us. So, whatever we can do to try to solidify our position and make sure that our customers continue to have reliable and safe power, I, I, that's, that's why I'm recommending this, and I think this is a good move on our part. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I can't, I just wanna elaborate something Mr. Ochoa had said, we did, we did reprioritize existing funded projects in order to, to, to pay for this, or to, to fund this, this particular repair. Most of the money came from a unit nine repair that we were gonna make, not a critical repair, something we can do in the future. Again, unit nine's the, the newest unit in a unit, unit that wouldn't be replaced even under a proposed repowering, so we had the flexibility to move that. I had tasked the managers with, with, with doing that and reevaluating, instead of just going to reserves and creating a new project. So, we were able to move that money here where it's more critical for us, especially as we get through this summer season. So, with that, please, any questions?
Thank you, I do have a card, let's take the card first, Mike Mohill.
Good evening, council members, my name is Mike Mohill. Well, here we are again, folks, it's break day, no money in GWP. We kept having our electric and our water rates increase every year since two thousand and nine, I can remember, and it's supposed to stay in the infrastructure of GWP. Instead, what do we do, Mr. Zern, council members? We take out about twenty million dollars a year to the general fund to pay for our salaries and our pensions of our Calpers Union workforce. That's why, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna have a patch job by GWP. Not a real serious job, but a patch job. Why don't we stop transferring money from GWP to the general fund to pay for the pensions? You know, you have a first obligation to the people who elected you to office, not the city employees who gave you campaign contributions or endorsements. You know, my electric rates went up again this year, and so did my water rates. What did I get in return? Nothing. Then you do a two-tier system on the water, electric goes up, and, and in fact, you went ahead and transferred money in violation of Proposition two-eighteen and twenty-six, and the city charter, but that's okay, after all, it's only money. The people of Glendale voted for this council and previous council to look after our interests first, not the city employees. Most of them don't even live in this city. This is just a job for you, for them, and you give them pats on the back every time they come up and speak. When is it gonna stop this transfer? One time you say you're for the transfer, next time you say you're against the transfer, and by the way, there's a lawsuit against a transfer that will be adjudged come this summer, and the judge is gonna say, you have to stop this transferring of twenty million dollars and give the money back from GWP to the general fund. What are you gonna do then? What are we gonna do then, when we have to stop this gravy, gravy train? Council members, when you vote tonight, think of what you've been doing to this city, especially our two senior council members, Freeman and Najarion, you've been around here long enough, you've transferred every time you've been on city council, you've never once said, oh, let's put the brakes on, but instead, you take money off of GWP right off the top, not from the surplus fund like the charter says you're supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, please, ladies and.
Mr. Mayor, do you wanna address any of what was said, because most, everything I heard there was wrong, or would you just like to move forward?
Lies, and there's damn lies.
Well, unfortunately, I mean, we can take.
But let's not, no, let's not, this is an issue about repairing and extending the useful life of some of our power plants to provide our residents with reliable and safe electricity, that's what we're here for, right, Mr. Zern?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, if someone would like to make.
Some comments?
Okay, comments? Let's go to Mr. Garpetian.
Okay, Mr. Zern, units eight A and eight B C, are they down right now, or they're, they're in need of repair?
They're down.
They're down. So, how long would it take us to repair it?
We should have these up, hopefully, we can have these up by May.
And what do we do until then?
Well, we're, luckily, we're in the low-use season, so, the demand isn't, is as great as it would be when we're in the hottest part. This is actually our lowest usage period, that's, that's why we're, we want to move forward with this as quickly as possible so that we can get it ready for when the hot season comes around. So, right now, we are okay.
So, we are not purchasing any extra power from, because of their down from other sources?
We're purchasing a little bit more, possibly, but nothing out of the ordinary for this time of year?
Okay, and, item eight, C five, when it says appropriate transfer funds from projects, and there are different numbers on those projects, therefore, what are those projects? This is the, the, the unit nine?
Correct.
Repair that you were indicating?
Correct.
So, you have money in your capital budget for the unit nine?
That was my next question, so this is, this is budgeted for, within our budget, basically?
Correct, we, we are not broke, and this money is actually in the infrastructure repair program, we're just reprogramming it to a more critical repair.
Okay, and how long would it, oh, you said until, until May, okay, so it would take another few months, because this is about one percent of the total cost that we're, cost of basically building a new, the cost of new, new power plant would be around three hundred million, three hundred and fifty million dollars, this is about one percent of that, so, it's a large amount of money, so, and my other question is, do we have, and I'm sure we do, I just wanna public tune as well, have we done any inspections as to what is coming up, what kind of repairs do we need in next year or two, for, or what is the budget for the, for the, what is our budget for, for repair and maintenance on the, on the power plant for next, next two or three years, and what is it that we anticipate that we have to do?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Garpetian, it is my hope that this is the last major repair we have. We have completed all of those previously, if, if you recall, what we did is we, we put. did is we prioritized anything related to the power plant and got to just those that we had to have. And we've got Unit 4 on a major repair that will be complete, hopefully around the same time. We just finished Unit 1. Unit 2 has had an upgrade. And with this, unfortunately, we weren't quite planning this one. We thought we could make it through, but with this one, then we should be good. Now, we obviously have annual ongoing maintenance and operation budgets, and occasionally, you'll get something that occurs that we have to bring in a contractor to repair. But major repairs, significant repairs, this is where we'd pretty much stop, at least until we get to a decision point for the council on the future of the plant in regards to repower.
Because of that point, we would only do patch repairs
Correct.
Until we actually do an entire new power plant. It would seem more than foolish to go and spend more than we absolutely have to, if ultimately, all we need to do is get these units to a point where we do a whole new power island.
And for the record, I neither received a contribution nor an endorsement in the past, so.
Ms. Devine?
Yes. Worst-case or best-case scenario, how long will these, will 8A, 8BC last if we do these repairs? You said, the report says a few years. You said, I think, three or four. Could it last longer?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Devine, that three or four is looking at the proposed repower schedule. This would pair us probably about five, five years it would be good for.
Okay.
I wouldn't guarantee it much past that.
If you were going to get out of the power business altogether, you would run these into the ground
Absolutely.
Five or six years.
Yeah, so you'd run them to retirement. Yeah, absolutely.
And if and when we decide to repower Grayson, what happens to these? Are they destroyed? Or do we keep them? Are they part of the new?
Go to a farm upstate.
They go to farm, out to pasture.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Devine, first thing we try to do is sell them.
Sell them.
And, you know, some people, you look, you go 1930, 1949 unit, 1940 units that you're going to sell. There's still some people, those are general electric units. There are some places in the world that may still take a chance at them. If not, we would then either cannibalize them and sell parts, or salvage them just as scrap.
Okay.
And the newer units, obviously, have a higher value and a greater opportunity for us to sell those, to resell those.
And as I understand it, Voight was the company that built and designed these?
The
But yet, they're not doing any of this work. Is there a reason for that?
Councilmember Devine, that's the company that makes the part. They make the original part.
Right.
They're the manufacturer of the part, not necessarily
They didn't design or do any of this
Company that does the actual installation.
Okay.
That would be ARB.
Thank you.
Mr. Sinanian?
Yeah, my questions are, I just want to make sure that everyone understands why we're going directly to these vendors, why there's no process, because these are large amounts, obviously.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sinanian, for the parts and the equipment, the filters, we're going to the original equipment manufacturer. And of course, I know this sounds like a broken record, but in a lot of our equipment, there's only, there's only one asset. The reason we're doing this is that it is the cheapest alternative, and it also is the quickest turnaround, by just putting in, replacing the existing parts versus, let me give you an example, of having somebody come in and tear the entire thing apart and put a whole new system in. Since we're not doing that, since we're doing a very focal, focused repair, we want to, we need to use the existing equipment manufacturer parts. That's why we're asking the purchasing administrator to do that. With regards to the company that's actually performing the maintenance, ARB, a few years ago, when I came to the utility, we tended to have a lot of what was called emergency repairs at the power plant. I did not actually think they were all emergency repairs, but they were treated that way, and we would go out to a contractor and have them repaired. What we did is we kind of stepped back from that, changed that around, put out a formal RFP to hire a maintenance contractor on a retainer, if you will, who could perform true emergency work, unforeseen work, and work that's beyond the scope of what our staff is capable of doing. ARB went through that process, we vetted them, and then we awarded the contract to them through council, a three-year plus two, and they're entering, the second year of their contract will start in April.
Okay.
And they're a firm that has traditionally been able to perform the repairs. They have a knack for the older equipment.
Okay.
But we did vet them.
So, yeah, thank you for that very detailed answer. So my question was about the parts themselves specifically, and I'm just going to try to restate what you said. The parts that are being purchased are for a much larger mechanism, and we're going to the original manufacturer of the larger mechanism because it's just cheaper that way. We know for a fact that that small part is, we can't get from someone else.
Correct. So because we're focusing our repair in a very small area, we're going to use the original equipment manufacturer's parts. Again, if we wanted to do an overhaul of this, we might tear all of the insides of it out and put in a whole new system, which could be some other manufacturer. But in this case, we're staying with almost, you know, 98% of the equipment that's there. So we need to go back to the original equipment manufacturer parts to make that as quick, as cost-effective as we possibly can.
And I don't want to beat a dead horse, but so 98% leaves 2% out there. I'm saying, these parts are not part of that 2%, right?
Yes, these are the 2%.
These are the 2%.
These are the 2%. I'm just, as an example, a way for us to get away from original equipment manufacturer would be just to tear the entire system down
Okay.
And put a whole new system in.
Right.
That then gives you the opportunity. If we were going to keep this unit, if we thought this unit had enough life potential left in it, or let's say we were going to keep it for 10 to 15 years, that then would be a totally different scenario, and we might propose that as well. But in this very short term, limited scope of work, this is at generally 2% that we're replacing, so we want to use the original manufacturer.
Right. And this isn't some, you know, spoke in a wheel, or some widget that anyone can manufacture?
That's correct. These are very specialized filter systems, actually, Mr. Sinanian.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zern.
There are no other questions. Mr. Garcia, how can we take these items?
You can take them all at one time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Would someone like to move 8C, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5?
I'll make the motion.
Your second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Let's take roll.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garbetti?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
We are at 8D.
8D, General Manager of GWP regarding contract award to Delta Air Quality Services Incorporated, an affiliate of Montrose Air Quality Services LLC to provide professional services for emission testing, continuous emission monitoring system, CEMS, quality assurance verification, and technical services for the Grayson Power Plant, GPP. 8D1, motion authorizing the city manager or his designate to enter into and execute a four-year professional service agreement, PSA, with Delta Air Quality Services Incorporated, an affiliate of Montrose Air Quality Services LLC, in the not-to-exceed amount of $402,760, plus a 5% contingency of $20,138.
Mr. Ochoa?
If we're going to be in the power generation business, we need to do the air quality testing. So this contract speaks to that need. I'll have Mr. Zern, who's on a roll, take you through the process that we used to select this firm.
But you don't have to roll as long as you did last time.
I thought I was doing well, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry.
That was the abbreviated, the Reader's Digest version of Steve Zern.
Do we have a PowerPoint on this?
I haven't gotten that far, no. Mr. Friedman?
Go ahead, Mr. Zern.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're required by federal, state, and local, regional air quality regulatory bodies to have a continuous emissions monitoring system at our power plant. And furthermore, we're required to have a third party that goes through a series of tests, validations, and audits of that system, and makes a quarterly report to those bodies, which is Federal EPA, California Air Resources Board, and South Coast Air Quality Management District. And they also submit an annual report. By law, we're required to have a firm that does that, and it was time for us to renew a contract, so we put it out to bid. And as you see, the results of that bid, we are offering it, we are recommending that we award a contract to the low bidder. It's a four-year contract. They were obviously low on the per-year cost. They had no inflator on it. They're going to hold their price for the full four years, and they have the best four-year total cost as well. So with that, I can answer any questions.
We have to do it.
Were these items typically on the consent calendar before?
The previous ones, certainly not. It was a larger item. This one?
Especially when we're bidding, and when it's a low bid, I think we're much more comfortable with a low bid issue than a sole source.
So are we ready to move the item?
Yes, I don't have any cards, and
I'll move the item.
I don't see any requests.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garbetti?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
8E.
8E, Chief Information Officer regarding amendment to the existing professional service agreement, contract number C106049 with Tyler Technologies Incorporated, for the purchase, implementation, software licensing, and maintenance of Munis, an enterprise resource planning software solution, including supplemental report carried over from January 26, 2016 meeting. 81, motion authorizing the city manager or designate to enter into and execute an amendment with Tyler Technologies Incorporated, contract C106049, increasing the not-to-exceed amount to $5,320,486. 82, resolution of appropriation in the amount of $542,486.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. Periodically, we make mistakes. And as you saw last meeting, this is quite a head-sapper of a mistake. We went through an exhaustive process on the procurement, detailed procurement of the Enterprise Resource Platform, ERP, to bring in Tyler Munis. We negotiated a very comprehensive request for proposal process, validation testing, and negotiation on those terms. At the end of the day, Tyler, as we reported to you last week, made a mistake and left out a significant portion of their contract. Thus, the mistake was in the city's favor. However, we do believe and agree that the mistake was made in good faith, and to the extent that the ERP migration is a very, very exhaustive and thorough process involving all aspects of the city, as this is basically our financial and HR system. We felt it more of the being penny wise and pound foolish if we were to deny what that which we had negotiated in good faith by way of the amount that was omitted from the contracts that they signed, and which we signed as well as we brought to you. Thus, we are asking you for this amendment, so that which they bargained for, which we originally bargained for, is reflected in the agreement. The question was brought up, would the additional $542,000 change the procurement? The long story short, but the short story long, as you'll hear from Mr. Ganley, is that no, it wouldn't have, to the extent that what we are looking for is, again, focused on the quality of a very sensitive system to our overall operation. So with no further ado, let me have Mr. Ganley walk through this overall process.
Before we do, can I just clarify from my own mind? So you negotiated something with them sort of across the table? So you agreed on a price, but that wasn't what was reflected in the contract?
Correct.
So it's not that you negotiated a price, and then later they came back and said, we made a mistake, we actually need more. You had already agreed to something.
We agreed to a number of terms. They compiled all of those terms into a very large document, into a large contract. They omitted an amount.
They omitted, but we knew, we knew that that's what they were
As you'll hear, what we were
We had agreed to that amount.
No, we didn't.
Well, we knew, the council
They agreed, I'm asking.
The council did not, because it wasn't reflected in the contract.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out.
It wasn't reflected in the contract that came to the council. As you heard Mr. Ganley discuss, we believed that the savings would be $1.8 million over what was quoted. It really should be $1.3 million under, 1.8 under what was quoted, and in fact, it was $1.3 million under what was quoted. In terms of what we want and what we bargained for, that amount should be, that 542 should be in the contract, because that scope of work is what we want them to do for us.
So in other words, even the amount that you had agreed to, not the scope of work, the amount that was put in front of you at any given time, was the lower amount, not the higher amount, right?
No, sir. Let me have Brian go through, and he will, we will go through the entire process.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And I will address those questions, as well as last week's questions. So the Enterprise Resource Planning System, I first presented here at council back in October. At that time, I focused on several of the same things I'll cover tonight, really focusing then on the procurement process and the capabilities of the system, why it was important that we make this change. Tonight, I'll repeat some of that, but I'll focus on cost, how that cost happened, and what's important about that cost, and the amendment that we're asking for tonight. So key points, why replace PeopleSoft, the RFP process that we followed?
You can skip that one. I think we all agree.
Great. So just to summarize answers to last week's questions, as Mr. Ochoa mentioned, the $542,000 difference would not have changed the outcome of the RFP process, and I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. The city will achieve an annual cost savings of approximately $1.3 million per year after PeopleSoft is retired. And that's really the end game for what the cost of this process was all about, is the return on investment, how soon we can start experiencing those significant annual savings. That's why the cost of each individual proposal was not as important as the return on the investment and getting to that $1.3 million in savings per year. So adding the $542,000 back will extend the payback on that ROI by five months' worth of time. So why replace PeopleSoft, the high ongoing cost? I'll skip through the rest. I think I covered it before. But it's that high ongoing cost of the system we operate today that was the emphasis of beginning this project. The RFP process itself, we developed a detailed needs assessment and RFP with a consultant. We went out to bid. In the scoring process that we included with the RFP and went through during the process, cost was not a scoring factor. And I'll talk a little bit more about why, but it's essentially because that return on investment, that $1.3 million in savings that we'll achieve once we successfully implement this software that we're talking about. Phase 1, minimum qualifications, 12 proposals submitted. This in particular was a key question from last week. This is a table showing every proposal that we received in regards to the RFP. Tyler Technologies, the proposal that we ended up signing a contract with and are implementing now is highlighted there. As you can see, in terms of the proposal amount, it's one of the more expensive proposals that we received. But I would direct your attention to the annual maintenance. This is four years' worth of maintenance. In that case, it's one of the less expensive proposals. The point of this proposal was, are we able to find any software vendor on the market that is called a Tier 2 vendor, a commercial off-the-shelf software, that can replace the much more expensive Tier 1 system that we use today, enabling us to achieve that $1.3 million in annual savings? Of course, we didn't know what that savings would be at the time in this early part of the process. I would also like to acknowledge the speaker from last week, and I would say that the point, that one of the points that was made last week was, do these initial costs matter? And I would say, to some extent, they're not nearly what the final costs end up being, sort of like the sticker price on a car. No one pays the sticker price on a car. No one really expects to pay the initial proposal amount. There were months' worth of negotiations and an 800-page contract in between this initial proposal and the final contract. So Phase 2, initial review, I just want to go over this very quickly. The different scoring options here, company qualifications, references, proposed solution, functionality, 60% of the total scoring on how we chose to move forward with vendors. It's all about, again, can we find any solution on the market that will allow us to save money over the expensive system that we run today? Going into this project, we weren't sure of the answer to that question. So 60% of all scoring functionality, implementation approach and work plan, technical requirements, and acceptance of city agreement. So you can see there the score totals, Tyler Technologies on top, Sun Guard next, Cyber, and a few other vendors there.
This is the total score, or just functionality?
This is the total score, but 60% of that total score is functionality. And again, as I stated in an earlier slide, cost is not part of that scoring. So Phase 3, detailed product demonstration, we invited the top three vendors from this slide in to do a web conference with our project team, demonstrate their product. This is where we start to dive deep into functionality, where we ask the difficult questions in detail. We need to do this, we need to do that, we support a utility, we support public safety. Can you support all of the finance? Can you support all of the finance and HR functions that those things require? And in many cases, some of these vendors are not able to do that. As a result of that process, we moved forward with the top two vendors, Tyler and SunGuard, unanimously selected to move forward as our finalists, and they remained in that process up until the signing of the contract. So phase four was proof-of-concept demonstration. We spent four days in our Perkins Community Room with each of these two vendors, Tyler and SunGuard, about 40 to 50 city staff in most of those sessions, different staff at different times depending on what function we were covering, diving in deep into specifically, okay, you have told us that you can do these things, show us how you can do it. Sometimes you learn in the sales pitch of some of these products, they say yes, 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 but the proof is in the pudding and this is the week that we spent with each of them determining, is that proof there, can they show us that they can do this? At the end of that week that we spent with each vendor, we asked for a best and final offer from both of those vendors. SunGuard was the lowest cost in each case, just as they were the lowest proposal compared with Tyler. So I have some more numbers here. The initial proposals from the screen I showed prior, Tyler Technologies, $5 million proposal, $1 million of maintenance. As you can see, SunGuard, about half that price. And then after the best and final offer, the beginning of a month's-long negotiation. So best and final is like some of the rock stars that do final concerts several different times. It's not nearly the final product. So after that first round of negotiations, we came down to 3.6 for Tyler with 1.2 year in maintenance and 3.3 for SunGuard with $400,000 in maintenance. So what's important here, and I'll get to it in another slide or two, is why did we not select SunGuard? And is this $500,000 discrepancy something that would have changed our mind? And the short answer, as I've already said, is no, it's not. So due diligence and verification. Meanwhile, contract negotiation is going on in the background with a team from the city as well as a team from Tyler. So we did reference checks with several different cities in the state that are implementing this software today, Encinitas, Fremont, et cetera, those on the list, and quite a few more. There was a slide in my October presentation that was about, I think, two, three dozen cities that are implementing Tyler software. Tyler has made their business going in and proving that they can do what Tier One software does for a price that's much, much less than Tier One software costs in ongoing support. They've proven that, they've implemented in several cities. They proved that to us through all of these phases of implementation. SunGuard did not.
Did not?
Did not, and that's on this slide. Phase six, committee recommendation. Tyler was the unanimous selection of the evaluation committee, best meets the functional needs of the city. That's 60% of the scoring, those complicated processes that we do because we are a large, full-service city. The evaluation committee was confident that no other Tier Two vendor would be able to successfully implement in Glendale. So what this came down to is, we either select Tyler or we continue with one of the Tier One software providers. If I go back to the slide I showed at the beginning with all of the different proposals, there are a number of those Tier One providers that were, for the most part, much higher proposal prices, more importantly, much more expensive ongoing maintenance and support. And that's what's important here, that return on investment, that once this project is implemented, that million-plus-dollar savings. It's actually about $110,000 per month in savings once we're implemented on this software. We did not feel that any other vendor could do that for any less cost than Tyler, and it was our only alternative versus what we're already running today, much more expensive software. Selection and negotiation. So I talk a little bit about some of the contract negotiation going on. During all of this time, after the best and final, we're adding different services to the contract, we're removing services. This is where we get down to the very fine details of those projects, and we're talking about large changes, plus and minus. Do we really need what the vendor proposed? No, of course not. Sort of like back to the car dealership analogy, they want you to buy rust-proofing, so that might have been in their initial proposal, and we would go back and tell them, no, we don't want that, so take that $400,000 item off. But we feel that we need more service, so change management. This project, and I talked a lot about this in my October presentation, will be a huge change to city staff that most of which have used nothing but PeopleSoft their entire career. Change management is very important, so we added more services there for outreach, for training, for support, to make sure we make this transition successfully. So selection and negotiation continued, further negotiation, what we presented to council on October 13. Tyler Technology, final price 3.2 roughly million with $1.5 million in maintenance, which is for five years, not four, as previously talked about on other slides. And then the corrected amount, 3.7 million, maintenance stays the same. This is the $542,000 difference. This is where, as Mr. Ochoa mentioned earlier, this is where the error was introduced. So I think that's Councilmember Friedman and Councilmember Sinanian's questions. The full amount of money, including the 542,000, was in that best and final offer. It was in each round of negotiations. It was that head-slapping arithmetic error in that not-to-exceed amount of the contract in the council item that we took in October was the first time that that error was introduced. So we're not being sold any new services. We're not talking about anything different than what we were talking about from the very beginning. The numbers just were not added up correctly. So payback period, as I mentioned previously, once we have this product implemented, $1.3 million a year in savings, about $110,000 a month. So this $500,000 amendment is a five-month difference in the payback on this project. Just cost analysis, savings, as I've already mentioned a couple of times. Average annual PeopleSoft operating cost is about $1.7 million a year. The average cost to operate Tyler Munis, the software we're implementing now, will be about $400,000 a year. This is where that $1.3 million a year comes from. So in conclusion, Tyler Munis is the best product to replace PeopleSoft for the city because it is the only product that we felt we could implement without going with Tier One software. That $1.7 million a year costs more than the $400,000 a year. The omitted amount would not have changed the selection. The city will achieve that $1.3 million in savings, and adding the 542,000 contract amendment will extend the payback period ROI by five months. That's all I have to present, and I can take questions.
Okay, so I pulled this item from consent calendar because the amount of the change was just so drastic and it led, you know, led me to look back at how we got to this point, and I just couldn't find that information in the report. So I want to thank you for a very thorough explanation. That was extremely helpful. And in the world where you have so much more expertise in this field than we do, obviously, we rely on the information that you provide to us. So just so that I'm clear on a couple of technical issues. The Tier One program that we're referring to, which is the PeopleSoft, I assume, right?
Yes.
This, the program that Tyler is going to provide to us, is it, is it Tier One or it's not? It just function as one? It functions as one?
Councilmember Sinanian, no, Tyler is a Tier Two vendor.
It is.
And what that means is their software is designed specifically for municipal government. We're a little bit on the large side of the typical client of Tier Two software. That's why there was a question as we entered this process, can we find Tier Two software with enough capability to do the complex things that a large city like Glendale does? But it's designed specifically with our functionality in mind. Tier One software is designed for usually Fortune 500 or other types of companies, requires extensive customization and support, and that's why that ongoing cost is more expensive.
Got it, thank you. And SunGuard, despite the fact that even with the mistaken bid amount or the contract amount, it was almost $1.1 million less total cost, less than Tyler Technologies, just didn't matter because they wouldn't provide those capabilities that we wanted to have from this program, correct? It would be like wasting money. I mean, we just, we wouldn't be replacing those things that we wanted to replace without having to pay for it, what we pay for PeopleSoft.
That is correct, and I'd like to point out on this slide, during our negotiations, as you can see, the cost of the Tyler product went down, and this is before the error was introduced, so that $500,000 in services is still included in these numbers. But the cost of SunGuard went up, and part of the reason for that is that during that process, we spent a week with them, et cetera. We were going through their capabilities and we were doubting that they would be able to implement successfully here. So we're seeing more resources being added so that they could try to make a successful proposal. Ultimately, we do not feel that that would be successful, and we would not bring that forward to council.
Okay. And without getting too technical, if it's at all possible for you to do, to answer the question, not getting too technical, what are these features that are so important that make a $1.6 million difference in the two bid amounts not important because they're so essential for our purposes?
Councilmember Sinanian, there are many.
Okay.
But on this slide, which I glossed over to some extent, we've listed some of them. So the ability to budget for authorized positions. So what that means is a system, again, without getting too technical, we want to be able to list all of the city staff and we want that to automatically populate a budget process. So we want the system to keep track of the 1,500 employees, what those salaries are, how that might change during the year due to step increases, et cetera, and what impact that has on the budget. And we want that to be automated so staff don't have to manually calculate something like that. Fully integrated document management solution, that's the ability to attach receipts and other supporting documentation to items within the system, a client base that includes more cities the size and complexity of Glendale. So one of the key distinctions here is that Tyler has implemented this product successfully in other cities, recently in Pasadena, currently implementing in Santa Monica. They have proven their track record that they can go in with comparably size and complex cities and do this successfully. That's something that no other Tier Two software could prove to us. All reports had the ability to produce real-time data. That's important so we can run reports on demand and not have to go through a process to produce data. Operational efficiencies gained by having all the modules within one database, less integrations, less IT work on the backend, and current system architecture was up to date. That would be a little bit technical to answer, but is an advantage for support and ongoing maintenance. There are many more, but...
Many more?
These are the highlights.
Thank you. No, that's great, thank you. So the total savings for us over the life of this contract versus PeopleSoft is how much?
Total savings is going to be $1.5 million over eight years and 11 months. However, again, once we implement this software and we retire PeopleSoft, it'll be $1.3 million in annual savings.
A year.
Ongoing. I would note, and I mentioned this in October, we're not able to just stay with PeopleSoft, so we would have to do an upgrade to PeopleSoft every roughly three to five years anyway. Right now, it's 20 years old and our last update was 10 years ago.
Ouch.
So most of the, as you saw in the proposals, most of the PeopleSoft proposals were several million dollars just to update the software that we currently run. So we did not even factor the ongoing need to upgrade into the $1.3 million in savings. That's actually a very conservative number.
And so that I'm clear, you quoted two numbers. One was a much smaller number for the duration of the contract with PeopleSoft, and then you said after that, after we retired PeopleSoft, it's going to be 1.5 or whatever, per year. So what's the difference between the, is people, are we going to have to stay with PeopleSoft for more, for a longer period of time?
Councilmember Sinanian, good question. And without going into too much detail, we do have to continue to operate PeopleSoft during the time that we're implementing the new software. That's going to take two to three years.
Okay.
So during that time, there'll be a gradual phase-down of the PeopleSoft software, but in the meantime, we have to continue to pay the ongoing cost to operate that.
Okay. I got it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Ms. Friedman?
Yeah, the only cost I have, the only question I have, and it sounds great, and this was a really great presentation, thank you. So I know you've done a lot of testing and a lot of due diligence, but I'm assuming you're still a little bit nervous about this? Maybe not. But are there any guarantees? I mean, what happens if we install it, six months down the line, system crashes or something happens? Do they come and they fix it for us? Are there any guarantees, maintenance, damages built into this contract?
Councilmember Friedman, the contract is very thorough. I would say there are no guarantees. However, the software is designed to do the functions that we do, and that is the easy part. The hard part is really the change management, the personnel changes. Again, those folks that have been here in Glendale and never used anything but PeopleSoft, now having to do new, a new way of doing everything that we do in finance and HR in the organization. When you see projects that succeed or fail, it usually hinges upon those things. And that's why it's so important, part of our selection of Tyler is, have you done this before? Have you successfully implemented this in other cities? The software actually is already installed. That only took three days, and that happened about a month ago now. That is the easy part. It's the people part, it's the change management, it's the business process consulting and redesign. That's where the real challenge is. And they do that with us. See, that's part of this millions of dollars. That's actually part of the $500,000 discrepancy is for those very services. Change management, professional services for business process redesign. They've done it time and time again in cities like Pasadena, comparable cities to us, which is something no other vendor could really offer. We feel very strongly they'll be successful. They've already started to assign people that are already on-site, getting this project underway, and those are people we've reviewed resumes. We've been very firm with them. We want people that have done this before. We're one of your largest clients, and we don't want to be a learning process for anyone. So they've sent us people that we have also vetted, not just the product, but the people in other cities where they've worked. Did they do a good job? Did you have any problems? And we're getting people so far that we're hearing, not from the vendor, but from our colleagues in other cities where that vendor has worked, that yes, they're the best Tyler has to offer, and this will be successful.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carpetian?
Yes, you're such a good presenter. You answered most of my questions, but as far as PeopleSoft goes, do they know that we are in this transition?
Councilmember Carpetian, yes, they do. They've known since the beginning, since the RFP was issued. They don't usually respond directly, and they did not, but several of their, several of the proposals were for PeopleSoft upgrades.
Okay.
So they are aware.
So now, my last question is, what is the amount that we're approving tonight? Is that, because on our agenda, it says $5,320,486 and then appropriation of $542,486. Is it, is that appropriation in that 5.3?
It is an appropriation of $542,000, and it is correcting the, again, as Mr. Ochoa said, head-slapping error in arithmetic...
4.7.
On the not-to-exceed amount. So it increases that amount, that 4.7 million dollar amount on the slide there, which includes the product and implementation price and five years of maintenance, and bumps that up to 5.3.
Okay, that's what you're approving. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Devine?
I just want to thank you for the report, and I get the impression that we are getting a customized system, that some, a system that you have really designed for our city, and I think that you've gotten a reasonable price for it. I think the 542, it's something that we negotiated for. It was, we agreed to pay for it, and that 542, and it was just omitted. It was a mistake, as was said, and I think we have to, we're going to get that service, so we should pay for what we get. So I'm willing to approve this.
Mr. Mayor?
Second.
8E, 1 and 2? We do have a speaker, sorry. Bill Weisman?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city staff, council members, and the public. My name is Bill Weisman from far north Glendale. My name is Bill Weisman, from far north Glendale. I'd also like to start by expressing my appreciation to Mr. Gannely for his detailed presentation. There were a lot of items included in that that we didn't get to know about the first go-around, and it's good to be able to have some visibility into that. Mr. Mayor, as I recall, last week when we discussed this, you expressed a concern, and while I don't think I can quote you directly, I'm going to try and paraphrase what you said. You said that the fact that this inadvertent omission was of such a large quantity that it created a concern that perhaps mistakes of the same magnitude could conceivably be made on the software side of the house as well. And it was somewhat of a rhetorical question. And I just wanted to say that I share that concern, and I wanted to mention a couple things that, as council members, you might be able to do to address that concern. It is not uncommon in software and professional services contracts to have indemnification clauses, meaning that if somebody sues the city of Glendale as a result of some mistake or problem that is traceable to the UNIS software, the city should not be liable. The vendor should be liable for covering any such risks. And this can also be done through insurance, but it can be done through indemnification clauses in the contract. I don't know if any of those clauses exist in the current contract with Tyler Technologies. If they don't, it might be too late to get them in, but just want to mention that as a possibility for any future contracts that you negotiate, to make sure that the city of Glendale is insulated from taxpayers having to come up with money to pay out an award, damages award in a lawsuit that was not the fault of the city of Glendale. And so I would ask you to consider that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have an indemnification clause for negligence on the part of the UNIS program?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, yes, we do. That's Section 12 of the contract, indemnity.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
For 8E1 and 2?
I will second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Nijarian?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on. Item 9A.
9A, Director of Public Works Regarding Conditional Vacation of a Portion of Honolulu Avenue Northwesternly of Rosemont Avenue, Vacation Case Number 179V. 9A1, Resolution Ordering the Vacation. 9A2, Resolution adopting Plan Number 12-238.
Hey, Mr. Ochoa.
We'll have Mr. Galanian take you through the vacation case that was considered by a planning commission that's being brought to you here.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. I'll go to Mr. Galanian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I also have a PowerPoint presentation, but it's only one slide. As comprehensive as we can get. So we've received an application to process a right-of-way vacation on Honolulu Avenue, just northwest of Rosemont Avenue, and if approved, the proposed vacated area will be incorporated into the adjoining properties. During the title research for this vacation, we found two irregular property dedications in 1924 and 1925, and a right-of-way vacation by the county in 1954 after the annexation of La Croceena into the city of Glendale in 1952. This proposed vacation will clear up any ambiguity between those two dedications and one vacation that got processed, and will eventually put the right-of-way line behind the sidewalk in alignment with the rest of Honolulu Avenue. I'd like to add that we will serve a seven-foot easement over the vacated area to serve as the public street use. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions from the House.
Okay, cleaning up 90-year-old mistakes. Very good. I don't have any cards. Are there any questions of council?
I move the item.
Second.
I'll close the public hearing, and we'll take roll call.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Nijarian?
Yes.
And that was 9A1 and 2, I believe. The maker of the motion included both. Okay, thank you. What is next?
Mr. Mayor, council, the next item on the agenda is oral communications. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay. First speaker is Mr. Connor Corcoran.
Counsel, good evening. My name's Connor Corcoran. I'm an attorney from Philadelphia, and I'm here to thank council for what was a first in my legal career, which was an incredibly swift and comprehensive response to a problem that my wife and I had. We moved into the top of Pacific Avenue, I guess about a year ago, to one of the older homes in the neighborhood, and we'd been having some problems with some kids that had escalated into racial threats and things like that. I sent an email, I believe a little more than a week ago, and I got quick response, needless to say, and then 24 hours after that, somebody knocked the fire hydrant off in front of the house and flooded the second and third floors of my house. When I then sent out another round of correspondence to council, I believe I heard from just about everybody, but I would like to thank Paula Devine in particular for contacting me and helping to put me in touch with both the city attorney's office and the city manager's office. I've been in touch with representatives from both of those offices, in addition to the kind officer beside me. So I do think that we're going to hopefully come to some kind of an arrangement for public safety up there concerning the empty lots that are the root of the problem. I don't know whether that's going to be through some kind of legislation or updates to the city code, but I am going to be working with these agencies to do it. I would like to tell you that I've been a lifelong member of the Democratic Party in Philadelphia, and I've given an awful lot of money to elected officials in that jurisdiction, and I have never gotten swift response, quite like I have from this council here today. So thank you, everyone, and I will be in touch with your respective offices very much.
Thank you.
Unless, do I need to answer any questions for anybody?
Just let us know how it works out.
Yeah.
I certainly will.
Report back to us.
I certainly will. Great, thank you, everybody.
Our next speaker is Suren Torosian. Is Mr. Torosian here? Okay, if he comes back, let him know. Arman Marderosian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff members. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak here today on behalf of the 413 North Adams Street residents. My name is Arman Marderosian. I'm also a resident in that area. I moved to the neighborhood with my family seven years ago, and I've been the witness of the rise of the rents in that area. And as a citizen of the United States, I feel obligated to raise the issues in the community. Economically speaking, the majority of the residents living in the building are considered low-income families. They're students, pensioners, and people who are struggling with their own economic situation. We have gathered signatures from residents who have complained and are affected by this problem, and thus, we are here to raise our concerns regarding the dramatic increase in rents. The complaints are due to the fact that the rent has been drastically growing up, making living conditions harder. In the December of 2010, the rent was $1,450, and in 2014, it was raised to $1,500. And in the July of 2015, it was raised to $1,600. A notice was given to the residents on January 21 of 2016 that, starting from the month of April, rents will be increased by $450, making the total amount of rent 2,050 per month. This means their rent will be increased by 31%. There are families who are, due to their workplace, school, or personal reasons, are unable to move out, and therefore, they're struggling with the increased amount due to the pay each month. The residents strongly believe that implementing rent control will stabilize this situation by regulating residential properties, by only allowing and mandating gradual rent increases, while at the same time ensuring that landlords receive a return on their investment. Therefore, the residents present today, on my left side here, including my family and I, and many who were not able to make it tonight, would appreciate your consideration on this matter. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a quick question?
Ms. Friedman?
Quick question. First, I want to thank you all for coming and sitting here so long. Are you all, are you mostly on month-to-month rents, or do you have year-long leases? Just out of curiosity.
It used to be a year lease, but currently they're changing it to a month-to-month.
Can you tell us your rent schedule one more time? 2010 was $1,400?
So in December 2010, this is my, this is my family, what we paid, was $1,450.
Okay.
In 2014, it was raised to $1,500, and in July of 2015, it was $1,600. And just recently, it was raised.
And is it the same owner?
No, the owner has been changed.
When was the owner changed?
Just recently, just recently.
So it's right now, it's from $1,600, it's up to $2,050.
$50.
From $2,000, okay, thank you.
That was in North Adams?
Yes, in 413 North Adams Street.
Thank you.
And all the residents are very concerned regarding this, and unfortunately, not everyone was able to attend this meeting, so we're almost the representatives here, and just concerned.
So let me ask a question. Everyone here is from that building?
Yes, correct.
Or from the particular building?
Yes.
It's an apartment complex?
And how does that?
It is a complex of 60 units.
58.
58, about 60, so.
And how are the rent, is that a two-bedroom unit that you're?
Yes.
How do those compare to other buildings on the same block?
Well.
The rent?
I am.
If you know.
I personally don't know. I personally don't know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
It's a difficult situation. Stephanie Schuss.
Good evening, Mayor Nijarian, council members, city staff. I'm Stephanie Schuss, and I've lived in Glendale for, since 2001, when my husband and I moved to what is now the historic district of Lower Royal Boulevard. I do believe that the city of Glendale is a logical place for an Armenian-American museum, given that Glendale, quote, is widely thought to be the center of Armenian-American life, per Wikipedia. I think this museum is an addition that can contribute to the city's cultural life and encourage other museums to consider Glendale as a site. What I don't understand is why the museum committee hasn't chosen to locate this museum in downtown Glendale, where it would maximize its cultural impact and increase its economic contribution to the city's retailers, restaurants, and hotels. When I saw the sketches of the museum's plaza and outdoor park, my immediate response was how welcome this would be in our downtown area, particularly given that virtually all the new apartment houses are smack up against the sidewalks with minimal plantings. Furthermore, it seems that a downtown location would be of great benefit to the museum itself. A high level of foot traffic circulates in downtown Glendale for entertainment, business, shopping, dining out, all of which would generate visitors to the museum. There is also considerable public parking, the Americana and Galleria parking lots. Just as the green space at the Americana attracts visitors, so would the museum's green space attract visitors. I recently read that Glendale Community College is in discussion to purchase the Civic Auditorium in one of the adjacent parking lots to renovate the building for a student center. If the corner parking lot is to be sold or repurposed, and there doesn't seem to be an urgent need to do so, then it makes more sense to be part of a deal with GCC, as it will likely need room for expansion in years to come. If the college purchased that entire area and the museum was located downtown, it would eliminate the current controversies about the location of the museum. Plus, both institutions would be in a better position, literally and figuratively, with the one possible exception being that the museum might have to purchase downtown land, just as most private museums around the country have historically done, including the Armenian Library and Museum of America in Massachusetts. That museum's organizers purchased an existing building and its property in 1988 and completely renovated it through private donations. Very cleverly, the renovation included extra office space to be rented by Armenian organizations, and now includes the Armenian Tree Project and the Armenian International Women's Association. This delivers a built-in revenue stream for the library and the museum. Our city manager and his staff had encouraged a downtown location, and city council member Laura Friedman noted that while she is enthusiastic about the museum, she too would have preferred a downtown location. I truly don't understand why this approach isn't being actively pursued. It's an approach where everyone comes out a winner, the museum, the city, the college, our residents. I urge all parties involved to give this approach serious consideration. I ask the city council to hold its own public hearings before any further action is taken in fairness to both the museums, the museum, and the neighborhoods, and in order for staff to prepare recommendations based on input from all the parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Marie Breiken? Or Brechen?
Hi, I'm Anna Marie Breiken. I live in Del Monte Drive, right across the wash from where the museums plan to be built. She said it all. I totally agree with her. My concern is traffic. It's horrendous, you know, during business hours and all that, and I just can't see it going through the way it's designed, and it's right up against the wash with buses going there, fumes coming over the wash, the smell, the noise, all that. But I think it's a great idea to build one, but I just don't, I'm not in agreement for building it there. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and councilpeople. My name is Alice Headley, and I live directly across the wash from the proposed museum. We're talking 550 feet. So I'm just, that it will greatly affect, I will be greatly affected by the building in any events that will take place in that plaza outside the museum, any fundraiser, anything that would be done out there, because it is such a canyon, and anything done by that wash, it amplifies the tone and the sound. So it being my property right across the way, I'm just like, when we had the circus, amazing noise, let me tell you. You couldn't be anyplace in my house and not hear it. So it doesn't matter what's So, it doesn't matter what's being built over there, if it's gonna have events or whatever, I'm, I get to hear everything. Um, the facade of the building that they're showing is showing it being lighted at night. Am I gonna have to have blackout curtains in my bedrooms because of the, the light that's gonna be on the facades? I mean, it's like, right there. Um, also, you know, we're talking about parking issues. We're already in a permit parking area, but it's only during school hours. This is gonna come on the weekend, on, where, where are we supposed to park? Where are we, you know, and we go for permit parking that is for the whole, whole week and twenty-four seven. Anytime we wanna have a party, we have to go to the permit section and try and get permits. Say you wanna have, you know, five people over, well, that's two cars, and they don't all fit in your driveway, and you can't get a permit in, in that amount of time. Um, our other, our other thing is, is that on Del Monte Drive, the street is narrow to begin with, but when you put two sets of cars parking on that street, the fire department can't get up and down our street to turn around. They literally have to back out, and if they're in a rush for any certain reason, they can't do what they want. Um, I won't go into the traffic issues, that's a whole nother thing, but it being on, in a historical neighborhood, the entrance, what they're proposing just doesn't really fit our neighborhood, and the height of it, that's what I'm gonna be looking at, out my kitchen window, out my living room, and out one of my bedrooms. I thank you.
Thank you. Narine Asaturian.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here with the four one three North Adams. Armin pretty much covered everything, but to answer your question, the rents are going half a block from us. The apartment, two-bedroom, two-bath, got rented for seventeen hundred. Um, a few blocks up, more north, a nicer area, apartment with two-bedroom, two-bath, three days ago, got rented for fifteen hundred. So all the apartments from two thousand and up, those are the newer buildings. Ours is pretty old, the new buildings on Broadway and I think Central and Orange in that area. So we just want some rent control. We understand he has to raise it, because there is no rent control, but four hundred fifty, that's not reasonable. And if he's not, and we can't even call him directly. He has no number, it's just his lawyer and our manager. We can't even talk to him personally to ask him to at least meet us in the middle, or give us a longer time to look for a place to live, because some of them, actually the older people aren't here, because they're, they're too old, they couldn't make it. I mean, it's really hard for everybody. I mean, I hope we didn't sit here and waste our time. You guys could really do something. Before April.
If you're, if you're finished.
It starts April first.
Yeah, I mean, if you're finished, I can respond, but.
I'm done.
I mean, there's only so much the council can do on a particular building. We can make sure that it's safely maintained, we can make sure that there's no code violations. Uh, however, uh, you know, we can't go to one landlord and say, "You can't raise your rent."
Right.
Unfortunately.
But you could do rent control.
Well, rent control is a citywide issue that must be voted on by the voters, and...
It sounds like this, his, he's asking what sounds like a five hundred, six hundred dollars over market for the area.
Yeah.
As well.
Yeah, for what it's worth.
So it sounds like not every building is going through this kind of drastic increase. I'm sure some.
No.
There might be some, but, but it's your building, for whatever reason, he's, the new owner's chosen.
No, it's not every building.
Hmm, okay, that's interesting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming forward. Mike Mohill.
My name is Mike Mohill. Between a rock and a hard place, in the discussion of the proposed Armenian-American museum, one must also question why this council also wants to sell the historic Glendale Civic Auditorium. We need the money. The unfunded pension debt for current city retirees is four hundred and forty million dollars, and an additional thirty-eight to fifty million dollars will be needed this year, when Calpers also report additional investment losses. Both entities will disrupt the serenity of the nearby communities. The college plans to install a huge ISO four-story parking structure with six hundred and fifty-five spaces topped with lighted tennis courts. Security lights would have to stay on until eleven P M. at the corner of Verdugo Road and Mountain. This mammoth edifice will become the new ugly light beacon for the college and neighborhood. Since the college stays open from seven A M. to ten P M. daily, the additional traffic congestion and parking will affect the quality of life in the Rossmoyn and Royal Canyon neighborhoods. Most importantly, once the city sells the auditorium and surrounding parking lots to the college, the state of California becomes the new property owners. Glendale citizens will no longer have any input or control on how the property is used in the future. The college's dream of expansion will be completed. More buildings, thousands of additional students, faculty, and probably in the future being named a university. If a museum were located in Glendale, there are many examples where cities, counties, and state donate or lease land for a couple dollars per year to cultural institutions. Chinese-American Museum, California African-American Museum, Museum of Tolerance. Unlike the sale of the auditorium to the college, the proposed Armenian-American Museum will use leased land from the city, and, and the property will always be owned by Glendale citizens. The museum would stand out about as high as our civic auditorium, with subterranean parking, and will be paid forward by private funds. The building will be a total of a hundred and fifty feet from residential neighborhoods, and seventy percent of the land will be used to create a peaceful garden and plaza. Existing surface parking will be replaced with subterranean parking, operating between ten A M. and six P M. Unlike the college owning the property, the museum would generate much lighter traffic in the impacted neighborhoods. But let's get to the real issue here. Why do we need to sell our jewel assets to pay Calpers? Selling our assets is not a vision for change, but kicks the can down the road again, leaving our children and others to pay the bills. As I have said many times in the past, giving our Calpers Union workforce salary increases would only increase our unfunded pension debt. We have over four hundred and forty million dollars in unfunded pension obligations, and over two hundred and fifty million dollars in unfunded Cadillac post-employees medical insurance. Let us not forget the one point six billion dollar bond debt you have settled on our children. After you sell the city auditorium, you will sell the historic Rockhaven Sanitarium and other jewel assets. To pay our pension debt, will you again consider raising our water and electric rates beyond the cost of delivery? Will you again increase fees and taxes in order to pay our pension debt? Are you again planning to illegally transfer twenty million dollars from G W P. to the general fund? After the damage you have inflicted on your constituents, will you move on to seek higher offices, like Mrs. Friedman or Mr. Najarian? Or move out of town? You need to tell the public the truth. We need to bring in an outside consultant, not city staff, and see how we can leave the corrupt and irresponsible Calpers pension system. Selling our assets is not a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Leann Reynolds.
Could I ask a question of the city manager?
Yes.
Because I keep hearing this, that if the museum isn't built, there's gonna be a giant parking lot there. I keep hearing this in the public, but I've been sitting up here, I've never heard this from anybody, so is this true? Where is this coming from, and how come I don't know about that? If that's, if it's the museum or a parking lot?
Yeah, with, with deference to our colleagues and partners at the college, I do feel a little bad for them, not nearly as bad as I feel for the council, when you sit through a lot of the misinformation you've heard, but this notion of the, the college somehow wanting to purchase this property to help pay for pension obligations is, is farcical at best, and how it plays back to the college is even, even more farcical. The, the civic auditorium as a city venue loses a few hundred thousand dollars a year. It just is not a state-of-the-art, very attractive, well-located, well-placed, well-laid-out, it's a very cavernous type of venue. So, we continue to operate it. The college, which is landlocked, has approached us in the past to say, "What are you gonna do with that? It isn't for sale, but it possibly could be purchased by another public institution for a public benefit, i.e. the college." So, the college has approached and is interested whether or not we would sell. Well, maybe there is a, a reason to do it, but it certainly wouldn't be to pay for pension benefits.
About the parking lot.
The, so, the, it gets to the point, the discussion of what is the college going to do? Is the college going to put some behemoth parking structure at that location? That has cropped up. Where that crops up, I don't know, and talking with Dr. Vayar, he at this point has, has become so flustered by the misinformation that he's going back to his board to enter it into the record, that no, they wouldn't put a six-story parking structure there, because if they did have construction dollars through a future bond issue, and they did want to build out the, the campus or the buildings, it would be for instruction space, not for parking. It's a surface parking lot today, it isn't even a full surface parking lot today, it would continue to be a surface parking lot. So, to the extent that there is a good deal of scare tactic out there, I, I don't quite know or appreciate where it comes from, but the poor folks at the college now, at this point, are afraid of being cast as somehow the villain in the community for putting in this enormous parking structure, and doing so against the will, or somehow in the dark of night, without any input from the public. I would submit to you that although the State Department, that's what Mr. Mohol's alluding to, the State Architects Office would be the group to process the, the entitlements, the GCC Board is made up of elected officials from Glendale, who are, who feel all the same pressures that you, as elected officials from Glendale, feel. So, if there was to be an enormous parking structure, and that was not the will of the public, that same political pressure could be brought to them in an open meeting, just like this kind of open meeting, and they would be told not to do that. So, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that, that is a talking point, but that apparently is not a real talking point. It's just words.
Well, one more follow-up question, Ms. Mayor. So if, what, what is the, because we are not in these negotiations or in this, in these meetings regarding, sorry?
I'm just, I.
Because this is agendized, this discussion.
It's not agendized, so I'm hoping we limit the questions.
Yeah. The parking structure is not agendized.
No, no, I understand that, but what I wanna ask is, what is, what is the, the goal of college so far, as far as the meetings go? What, what do they indicate as to, what, what do they wanna do on that corner lot? I think that's what everybody's most interested to know.
I think they wanna keep it as, as parking. Currently, it's parking, we split revenues with them, and, so if, if the college ultimately said, "You know what? You guys want, you, city, want too much money for this to part with it," then we won't sell it, and we'll continue to, to receive parking revenue from it.
Should we agendize this item? It seems to be a, a very important.
I would submit to you, sir, that, that it's coming to a head in terms of our discussions with the college, and either we're gonna do something or not with them, and that will come to you, we'd like to put it on a closed session, just to give you an update, because I think we're closer to the end than not, in terms of doing something or not. With respect to the museum, you've heard that now a couple times, understand, there is an exclusive negotiating agreement, and all the E and A process is, it's a feasibility process. So there will be a, people ask questions all the time, I've received many nice emails from, from residents, especially in that neighborhood, that some of these residents are from, asking, "Well, what do you, what, tell me about the lease between you and the, the group."
Well.
Well, I, I, I'll end with this, is that there is no lease, because there is no feasibility study at this point, because there is no initial study in terms of the CECL review, which would have to be done at this point. So, we are allowing, it was requested by the committee to determine if it was feasible. The city council said, "Go determine if it's feasible, come back to us in a year." That year is almost up.
I, I'm, I'm tempted to put this item on the agenda as a status, information only, just so we can, the discussion of that corner lot, including the museum, status of the museum, and the college as well. I've been on the Board of Trustees, and I know how they think, and I'll have some comments about that when it's agendized, because there's a lot of angst in the community. We've all gotten emails, we've all gotten the next door.
Next-door neighbor.
My, my poor battery is about shot because of so much action, and I think we owe it to the community, just to give, not to make any decision, but to, as you, basically what you just did, give a step-by-step status of where we are, and what remains to be done, and what different things are going out there. So maybe, if, if someone would agree to that, and it doesn't have to be super long.
I agree to that.
I agree.
Something that we can just get out there and help dispel some of the myths and.
About time.
And put the truths out there.
As long as it's not a discussion over the project.
No.
Because we're not, I don't think we're at the point even to have that discussion.
It'll be information.
Yeah, because I.
Information only.
I'm hearing things like that for the first time, and I don't know where they're coming from, so.
Okay, so, thank you for waiting patiently. Ms. Reynolds.
I felt like I was part of City Council. Thank you, mayor and city council members and staff, for allowing me to speak before you on an important issue concerning our city, which is the issue that you have already had under discussion. My name is Leann Reynolds. I'm the former president of, and current board member of the Royal Canyon Homeowners Association. In addition, I'm a resident in the nine one two oh seven zip code, just north of the intersection of Verdugo Boulevard and Mountain. I am also a leading realtor in Glendale, so I am very familiar on many levels with this particular intersection. I'm aware of the city's plans under consideration for either maybe the sale of the civic auditorium to GCC, and also the city's consideration for a museum to be developed on the northwest parking lot, next to the civic auditorium. So I'd like to share with you my personal thoughts, given all the positions and the hats that I wear in town, and most importantly, about the proposed museum on the city site. I'm also here to suggest a better way to view this large area of the city-owned property. So there. Regarding the proposed museum, I don't believe it's in the interest of the city, the best interest of the city, the museum, or the, for the surrounding communities, to construct a museum at this location. So it's the location in particular. I don't think it benefits the city, I don't think there's infrastructure around this particular location that's gonna bring you revenue. There are no restaurants, other than maybe McDonald's and Coffee Bean around there for people to partake, and there's no hotels. So if the museum wants to attract an international presence, there's no place to stay, there's no place to eat. Secondly, I don't believe it's beneficial for the surrounding neighborhoods. This location is the gateway for the Royal and Greenbrier Canyon neighborhood, Rossmoyn and Verdugo Woodlands. That's three major homeowner groups. I don't have the statistics of the number of homes, but we're well over five thousand representing those three groups. It would increase traffic, making it more difficult to enter and exit those neighborhoods from the two and the one thirty-four freeways. And the simple fact is, there's no way that an entire museum's worth of traffic can be accommodated on the narrow section of Mountain West of Verdugo. I don't even think we need to do traffic studies, if anybody has been on that small strip of Mountain West of Verdugo. The museum's proposed location would make it more difficult to get our children to area schools. Those areas go to VW, Wilson, and Glendale High, so you have to go through those intersections if you live in Rossmoyn and Royal Canyon, basically, to get there. It would create light pollution for a large segment of the neighborhood homes with its current oversized glass modern building that would be lit throughout the night. Light pollution is a major concern for the communities. It would also be added increased noise levels from the large group attendance at the outdoor spaces, because they will have microphones and lights and that sort of thing. And we have had examples of the circus, the amplification of sound was horrendous, all the way up to Old Phillips Road and beyond, more than you'd ever anticipate. So all of these factors, I feel, would potentially negatively impact. So, all of these factors, I feel, would potentially negatively impact the home values in those neighborhoods, and that's never a good thing for the city's revenues. And I don't think the location is good for the museum itself. As I mentioned, there's no infrastructure surrounding the museum. There's no walking traffic. I think central downtown corridor, or perhaps even San Fernando Road, which we're trying to greatly improve, just like Burbank continues to improve that corridor. So, I think it should be downtown or in the other corridor to benefit the city's revenue and the museum's attendance. My recommendation, and I think what you're hearing today, is for the city to present the residents of Glendale a master development plan for the city-owned property on the stretch of Verdugo, which runs from a city parking lot north of the civic auditorium, the civic auditorium itself, and the parking lot under consideration for the museum. A master plan. That's what I think we're asking for. Any traffic studies and other analysis under review should address all the proposed plans for this corner. Just to do a traffic study for a museum and then not think about what might happen with the civic auditorium is apples and oranges. It's a whole big development site, and I think we need a separate plan. This is, as I know it, the busiest intersection of Glendale, and adding further college or museum development plans to this location needs a thoughtful, cohesive plan by our city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ara Arista Kessian.
Ara.
There's two Ara's. I have Ara Arista Kessian, and Ara Hofseppian's coming a little bit later.
Good evening. My name is Ara Arista Kessian. I'm publisher, it's called Kolma for professional evaluation. I would like to, your attention regarding the fee, we have, again, increased, like always last three years. From 60 location, we reduced to 20. Probably this year, we're going to reduce another, maybe 10. And if you compare fees, city fees, with another cities like which surround us, Burbank, Los Angeles, Pasadena, it's like 10 times more than another city's offering. This one is like, if city thinks, if we have news rack in the cities that bring us like income, it's not like that, or it's like a profitable business, it's not like that because of this one. Actually, it's a free publication. We're not making any money. And I don't see anything, you know, increase 100% during three years. So, I don't know. It's the next, probably, the way we're going, it looks like next year is going to be another increase for $242, because if today priced 121, it's exactly what was proposed last year. So, I want you to pay attention on that one. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr.?
So, what's going on with this?
If you recall, when the fee schedule was adopted, and then council came back and reduced it to the levels it is now, we do a cost study, and the cost to permit the different news racks that are being discussed, it ultimately comes out to, I think, the higher number, the 242. The gentlemen that come forward, other gentleman that's here as well, argue that other cities charge a much lesser amount. That's a function of those cities not doing an actual cost study to determine how much it costs to process.
They're subsidizing this.
And they're effectively subsidizing. They don't know that they're subsidizing it because they haven't done a cost study. You have done a cost study. The city council has adopted as a matter of policy, those items or those issues that are commercial in nature, that accrue for the benefit of a private entity, should charge close to or approach the fully burdened cost, the public, the community shouldn't subsidize that. Newspapers, although these are free papers, ultimately, they are publications for the benefit of generating commercial activity. That's why we originally proposed, originally council agreed, to doing the fully burdened cost. After one of the gentlemen came forward last year, we knocked that back by half, and at this point, it's been requested to be considered again. What we have submitted to you is, if you want to consider it further, let's do it in the course of the fee study that comes each year, or the adoption of fees that comes each year, because I would submit to you that if you were to change this fee, there are a number of other people that are doing private activity that will probably say, "I don't want to pay that higher amount either. Can you do mine?"
They're not doing something that deals with the reading.
That deals with what?
Reading, 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 anything, reading newspapers. I mean, that's what, I think, sets this apart from all kinds of other activities, where the mere fact that, I mean, it sounds like, I don't know if, can we even talk about this right now? But if I can ask my colleagues to second bringing this on, putting this on the agenda...
It is coming back when we do this.
Well, when is that going to be?
We're not adopting anything until that comes back to us.
I understand. When is that going to be?
We can, you have mid-year budget next week. While I wouldn't, we don't anticipate changing any fees next week. Certainly, we can agendize this as part of your discussion on mid-year budget in the context of the fee study in general. And you can have that discussion. Absolutely, you, and I believe it was you, Mr. Sinanian, who had led the charge to pull that fee back by half to what it is today. If you hold it there, or if you were to pull it back by another half, again, that is entirely the council's purview. It's probably worth noting that the items that are being disseminated here in these news racks are for the LA Weekly and the Pasadena Weekly ostensibly pulling shoppers, diners to LA and Pasadena versus doing business here in Glendale, but it is what it is. But we can, I would be happy to include this discussion again next week as part of the mid-year budget.
Let's do that, please. And until then, no increases, right?
We would do next year.
Well, there's no increases. It's just...
Let's get that prepared for discussion.
Lynn Foster.
That's Mr. Mayor and council members and staff. Thank you for letting me talk. I'm going to make it really brief. I know it's getting late. I'm here to lend my voice to the others who've spoken about the inappropriate location, proposed location of the museum. And you've heard just about everything that's negative about the proposed location. Maybe some of you who aren't totally familiar with it don't realize that it's a one-lane street in each direction, just one lane, and because of the Verdugo Wash and the bridge that goes over it, it can't even be widened. Where the proposed entrance, as far as I know now, where it is proposed to be, is off of Mountain Street, and it would be about four or five car lengths past the intersection with Verdugo, which, if there were an event there and lots of cars going in, would be a major, major problem for that intersection. I have an idea that I want it to just float, and especially if you're going to have it on the agenda, which I thank you for doing. In case the main attraction of that city-owned property is that the museum would get the benefit of an under-market lease or whatever, there's another city property that might be so really ideal for that, and that would be the Armory property, which is also owned by the city. I'm aware there is a long-term lease with the state of California. However, this worthy project might be something that some of the government officials in the state of California, especially elected officials, might find, they'd like to help with. Maybe, maybe the lease could be compromised in some way. They might feel that this is worth compromising because of the nature of what's being proposed to put there. The building would be showcased much better there. It's a bigger lot. They might not even have to dig for underground parking. Right now, they are going to have to locate it 100 feet toward Verdugo from the Wash, the back of the building, and so that's going to force it really close to Verdugo. I mean, it would be so much prettier and more compatible if it were where the Armory is now, and Rick Caruso is sprucing up across the street. There'll be restaurants and all kinds of foot traffic that would benefit the museum as well. So, I hate to belabor the same old thing, but I just want to put that in your heads. Maybe somebody knows somebody that would be kind in the state government. Thank you.
Mr. Ochoa, did you want to give a report right now or not? I don't know.
Mr. Gris, he has already given me the evil eye, so he's going to give me the hook if I say anything else.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
John Gw...
Gwynn. Gwynn, thank you.
Oh, GW.
Good evening and warm regards, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is John Gwynn, and I'm the publisher of Pasadena Weekly, also of Arroyo, work for Southland Publishing. And I've brought along also our Director of Distribution, Don Margolin. He's also a Glendale resident and has addressed this body before, and I'd like to add my voice to the choir, who would like some consideration, perhaps, of agendizing the news rack permit renewal fees. Just a little background, though, to set some points straight. Glendale is an important part of our coverage area, Pasadena Weekly, and the readership here are very important to us, and has been for 32 years. And notwithstanding Mr. Ochoa's comments, next week, our cover story is about the new Museum of Neon Art that's opening here in Glendale. So, we're a newspaper, a news weekly, but we think that we have the best interest of our communities at heart beyond Pasadena, certainly includes Glendale. And as a free publication, we rely on these news racks. They're our lifeblood. They're very important to us. And over the years, we feel like we've been good stewards of these news racks. The cost study's notwithstanding, every year, we get a letter, and we pay the amounts, and every week, we put papers in these news racks, and we service these news racks. If there's graffiti, we remove them. We do all of this. And I'm sure there's costs borne by the city, and I understand that. But five years ago, the permit renewal fee was $15. The year before that, it was $10. Going from that to 52 and now 121, we think is arbitrary and unfair. And if you look around, the city of Pasadena charges $11.43 for their permit renewals, and we have 10 times more racks in the city of Pasadena than we do in Glendale. South Pasadena, $20. City of Los Angeles, Eagle Rock area, $21.69. So, these are, I understand that in the scope of the things that you guys are deciding on, these are small dollars, but these are big principles. And being a newspaper is something that we take seriously. And we feel that when we have to cut back on the locations, on the public locations because of the fees, that not only is that perhaps anti-small business, but it's also, it hurts the citizenry. It's harder for them to become informed what's going on in their town. If you want to find Pasadena Weekly after these costs, if they stay the same, you're going to have to go into private locations to find them, and we won't have the 13 racks along Brand Boulevard that we've been so proud of all these years. So, I wanted to make sure that we address this. I've spoken to some colleagues, some fellow publishers, and we're certain that $121 for news rack renewal has to be one of the highest rates in the entire country. And so, if we can get some consideration added to the agenda, we'd be appreciative of that. So, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
Was one of the reasons the news press stopped putting papers out was because they were being stolen en masse?
I don't know that that was the reason why. I think the business is changing.
Okay. Because I wondered if they'd experienced anything like that. Okay.
I think it became...
We've experienced that. When paper, when recycling costs go up to a certain level, $100 a ton, we get hit in our racks, and we have to always pay attention to that, but that doesn't stop us.
When this item comes back to the council, please attend, so we will ask more questions at that time.
I'd be happy to. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
You too, Mr. Margolin.
Thank you very much.
Okay, last speaker I have is Ara Hofseppian.
Good evening. My name is Ara. I live within a mile of the proposed Armenian-American museum, and it's interesting to me because I work in architecture, and I have a background in urbanism and city-making. I studied urban design at Columbia. So, the project is particularly interesting to me. And I think, I think the Armenian-American museum is a rather better use of the site than a parking lot, which it currently is. And I think, working in the field of architecture, I know that the city's going to require the parking to be self-sufficient within the building, so parking won't be an issue for the surrounding streets. And it's no secret that the traffic in Glendale is going to be an issue because of the 100-unit apartment buildings that are being constructed nearby. And I think that this project isn't going to be for outsiders, it's going to be more for locals within the area. And also the lighting issue, the city very, it examines very closely that the lighting doesn't, you know, promote a kind of voyeurism into surrounding houses, that it lights the surfaces of the museum. And views-wise, my opinion, I don't think that it's going to block any serene views. I think it's going to provide better views of an architectural artifact. And also, I think it's a great victory for a local design firm to win this national competition. I'll judge on Markozian Architects, who I'm a fan of, won the competition. And how these competitions work is, it's an initial design that catches the attention of the organization that puts the competition out there. So, it's very schematic, and the design will go through, as in all architectural competitions, will go through a design development in which it changes and more adapts to community needs. The original, the images that are published now are provocative and allow them to win. And I'm personally excited about the project. It'd be nice to not have to commute. I work in Culver City living in Glendale, so I commute, you know, a couple hours a day. It'd be nice to, on the weekend, to not have to commute to downtown or the west side to have the museum experience. So, that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other cards. Do we have any new business? No. So, upon motion, we will be adjourning in the memory of Joseph Sargent.
Sergeant.
Joseph Sifte.
Sifte.
Sifte. Second?
Second.
We are adjourned.